The following is a production of KERY TV, the Town of KERY's government access channel.
I'll order the December 14th meeting of the KERY Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Smith for our ceremonial opening. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think all of us can agree, this has been a great year for the Town of KERY. We've had some wonderful accolades, mostly family-friendly. I think we have a lot to thank for, for this year. So I just want to wish all of us and all of our citizens a very Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah. And I ask that you join me for the pledge allegiance. Thank you.
(Inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started with our meeting, we're saying goodbye tonight to a very important person to KERY. I'm looking for him.
He's up there on the left.
He's at the door.
Oh, he's at the door, ready to get out of here. Kyle Greer has been the Vice President of Economic Development in KERY since 2014, I think. And in that time, we've seen a lot of changes. Not only have we seen thousands of jobs, high-paying jobs come to KERY, but instead of people leaving KERY to go to work, now more people come to KERY to go to work. And it's a lot to do with what Kyle has done for KERY in the last few years. And he's going to leave some big shoes to fill, and he's greatly appreciated and loved by this council and a lot of people. And we'll miss him, but he's going into real estate and he's going to be hanging around, so we hope to see more of him. But Kyle, we want to thank you very much for all that you've done for the Town of KERY. First order of business on the agenda is to adopt an agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to adopt.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion's unanimous. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. Our first recognition is for the 2017 Employees of the Year. And Mr. Stiegel will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Council, it is an honor to be standing here. Would you guys join me? It says, "I'm standing here with you." Sorry. We'll try this again. It is an honor to be standing here with the Town's 2017 Employees of the Year, Mary Bierman and Charles Massey. For those of you who don't know Mary or Charles, I will take this time to provide a few highlights. Mary is a senior planner in the Planning Department. She is honored for her extra efforts in implementing the Imagine KERY Community Plan, in particular, and for guiding many cases throughout the rezoning process. Charles is an emergency communications shift supervisor with the KERY Police Department. He is honored for his commitment to ensuring a high level of service to citizens while following policy and protocol. Earlier this year, Charles was also recognized as the 2017 North Carolina Emergency Number Association Communications Supervisor of the Year. Quite a distinction. Both Mary and Charles are known for their dedication to the town and their extra effort they put forward on behalf of our citizens. Mary and Charles, please accept these plaques. Mary, it's kind of heavy. And Charles? On behalf of the Town of KERY, if we could give them a round of applause. You'd like to say a few words?
Come on, Mary, you're used to speaking to us.
Thank you so much. This is such an honor. I work with so many people every day that do so much for the town, and to be selected from all of those wonderful people is truly an honor. It's especially meaningful to me, I think, as a KERY native, at a time when our population was 7,000. So I've seen a lot of changes. It's all been good. And I thank you as mayor and council so much for all of the work that you do and the time that you put in to keep KERY such a great place to work and live. And also, I have to thank Sean for his leadership in the last year. Has been full of motivation and inspiration, not just for me, but I know for many other employees with the town, as we want to do really as much as we can to bring our best selves to the town and do what we can for our citizens to keep KERY on top. So thank you so much.
Not a public speaker, but just want to, it's an honor to even be a part of the KERY team and be recognized. As a part of that, I'm concerned, there's a lot of people up there do a lot of good things, and we're just doing what we need to do, and an honor to work for the Town of KERY. Thank you.
And Charles and Mary are a part of a 1,200-member team, 1,200-plus membered team, which I honestly believe is the best staff in North Carolina, if not larger. And to be selected out of that group of people is truly an honor, and we're very proud of both of you for all that you do for KERY, and thank you so much. We now move to our second item under recognitions, reports, and presentations. It's the Fiscal Year 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, known as the CAFR, and also is Karen Mills' favorite thing to talk about. Other than her kids. That wasn't in my red letter. I just made it. The Chief Financial Officer, Karen Mills, will present this item along with staff from Cherry Beckett &amp; Holland LLC.
Okay. Thank you. Good night. As you said, we're here to discuss the FY17 financial results and to provide the auditors an opportunity to speak to you that's part of their process. If you're interested in more detail than, or words rather than charts, there is an attachment to the staff report, Exhibit B, that provides a little bit more detail. So tonight, we're going to talk about the General Fund, the Utility Fund. We're going to talk about where the money came from, where we invested our money, and what priorities we invested in, our year-end financial position, the audit process, and then just very briefly, a look ahead. So if we start with the General Fund and start with the revenue, we can see that ad valorem taxes are property taxes, whereas our largest source of revenues, a nice, stable, dependable source of income. It's important to note, though, that almost 30% of our General Fund revenues are really out of our control, from things like sales taxes and ABC revenues. When we look at our General Fund revenue budget-to-actual, you can see that revenues came in just over budget at $161 million. That was just over $5 million, or 3%. That's close enough for us. We don't want to get too close and risk having to make any changes in the middle of the year. The General Fund revenues increased $5 million over FY16, or 3.4%. When we look at the same comparison, budget-to-actual, for expenditures, you can see that our expenditures were $141 million, and those were 9.4% less than the budget, $14.6 million. Our expenditures did increase $9 million compared to the prior year. But remember that our expenditure budget is an ordinance that you've adopted. It's a legal limit, not a target, so we're always going to come in under budget. So let's look at where we spent those tax dollars. You can see that personnel and benefits constitute 61% of our expenditures. So when we say employees are our most important resource, that's where the money goes as well. Our debt service was $13.8 million. O&amp;M was $39.9 million. That's things like contracted services or office supplies, all those other things that aren't capital in the General Fund. So let's look at what priorities we invested in. Public safety is consistently our top priority for our money, so spending on police and fire for the General Fund is 32% of our budget. General operations is close behind, only $200,000 less for $45.7 million, and that is public works, parks, and rec. So we're spending on things like streets and solid waste, parks and rec, those things that affect our citizens' quality of life and make KERY such a great place to live. There are a lot of key projects, though, that we invested in that can't be found on this chart. For example, the opioid overdose prevention focus. Those salaries are really spread across all the functions of our government. The organization worked as a whole on that, so you can't see that in any one particular place. Stormwater is a General Fund expense, and it's funded a lot out of development and infrastructure, where the water resources staff are for the General Fund function. And then also, a lot of money in public works, in the general operations, that take care of our stormwater culverts and street sweeping and things like that that affect our stormwater service. Another key investment of employee time was in the Eastern KERY Gateway and the downtown projects. Those crossover between general government and construction administration and development and infrastructure. Technology staff and analysts across the town worked on developing the project catalog and planning for 3-1-1. So let's look next at how our expenditures and our revenues compare per capita over time. This chart really starts 10 years ago, but skips from 2009 to 2013, but you can see the trend is very stable. It's worthy to note that our per capita operating expenditures have only increased 14% over 10 years, but clearly, we've increased our service levels and had inflation during that time. 7% of our expenditures are for debt, when you look at just our, when you look at capital and operations and debt service together. That capital spending in 2017 was $39 million and 21% of our General Fund investments. So let's talk about what we did accomplish with some of those capital dollars. The downtown park and the Academy Street renovations were completed and celebrated in June of 2017, a nice way to end the fiscal year. Jack Smith Park was dedicated in September of 2016, and the Sprayground, a new service, opened for its first full season in May of 2017. Work began on improvements to Green Level West Road in April, and that's going to widen a two-lane road to a four-lane median-divided section with curb and gutter, sidewalks, streetlights, and wide outside lanes for cyclists. The Crabtree Creek Greenway Project will add almost two miles of a 10-foot-wide paved trail along the southern edge of Lake Crabtree. Construction's expected to continue through the fall of 2018. A significant part of our capital projects are paid for with cash from prior fiscal year operating results, when revenues exceeded expenditures. Those dollars flow into fund balance before they're appropriated for capital use. The Town's fund balance is a primary measure of our financial position, so let's look at that. Fund balance decreased in FY2017. Let's look at what has happened over time. Fund balance was expected to decrease $18 million, and it only went down $1.4 million. This chart shows our total fund balance over the last five years. As I noted, FY17 dropped just a tad, and we'd expected it to decrease much more based on the budget. But because revenues came in over budget and expenditures came in under budget, the decrease was much smaller. We've transferred over $100 million in the last 10 years into capital projects for streets, fire, parks, and downtown projects. That's really significant. As a result, we're still in great position, and we have $39.9 million of fund balance that can be made available for future capital or other one-time expenses in accordance with your policy. This flexibility is key to our ability to be nimble, move quickly when those opportunities arise, and this cash helps us avoid debt. So let's talk about debt. This slide demonstrates that the Town's debt as a percent of expenditures is well below the council policy of 15%. While there is debt capacity within this policy, the operating revenues to cover any other additional debt would have to be identified through difficult choices that we've talked about at Budget Time. The key indicators of the Town's financial position in fund balance and debt service are critical components of maintaining our AAA bond ratings, and we're well within the standards of maintaining those ratings into the future. So let's talk about the Utility Fund. Over time, when we look at the revenues, we've invested in the wastewater plants, and we've borrowed money to do that. And when we did that, we had debt service that we had to cover with rates, so we've increased our sewer rates more than water rates in the past, so our sewer revenues are more significant than water at this time. When we look at our utility expenditures, you can see that a utility operates much more like a private business that's leveraged with debt, with all the plant capacity. So while the plant operations are a significant portion of the operating expenses, it's important to know that 1/4 of our operations, excluding debt, are dedicated just to activities out in the field to maintain our water lines and our sewer lines that provide our citizens that connection on a day-in and day-out basis. Public Works manages the water distribution and sewer collection system. They work to prevent line breaks, and they tackle accident repairs like this damaged sewer force main quickly and maintain our service levels for our citizens. When we look at our utilities and expenditures on a per customer basis, it's important to note that our operations per customer have increased only 10.7% over the last 10 years. And you can again see that capital is the larger component of operating the utility. Some of the indicators about the health of the utility are addressed in the coverage ratio for the bonds. When we borrow money for the utility, we must pledge to raise revenue in excess of the cost of operations and the debt service, and that's called a coverage ratio. Council has prudently set a higher coverage ratio than even the bond covenants require, and operations have safely met these limits. Another metric of the utility is days cash on hand, and our target is 365 days cash on hand. What that means is that if all the revenue stopped coming into the utility, the utility could operate for 365 days at a minimum with a break in our revenue, and we could continue to operate the utility. So that's our minimum. As you can see, we've exceeded that in the past. Knowing that FY17 was going to end in such a strong position, in FY18 budget, we appropriated $41 million and moved it from the utility operations to utility capital projects, and that helped us avoid debt on existing and future projects and postponed debt in the Utility Fund for another three years, and that will provide relief for the rates in the future. Some of the things that we've been spending capital money on are the KERY Apex Water Treatment Facility Phase III Expansion. This is going to expand the facility's capacity from 40 MGD to 56 MGD, and we're expecting this work to be complete in the spring of 2018. So things have gone very well, as you can see, in our financial position, and so as part of the audit process, I want to acknowledge the work that our staff does. They work all year long to maintain the books and records, but they work really hard during audit season. It's their busy time. And I want to recognize Seth Larson and Judy Denardis, they're here with us tonight, and the support of our new Assistant Finance Director, Kimberly Branch. They have, again, met the deadlines that they needed to in accordance with the State Treasurer's rules. They've conducted the preparation for that, and given books and records and the reports, we prepare the reports, to the auditors in such accurate detail that the auditors had no adjusting journal entries, and they have no recommendations for improvement for us in a management letter. So we take a lot of pride in that. We work to be our auditor's best client. So now, I'd like to introduce Cherry Beckett, Partner April Adams. She's going to address the audit and the process, and after she speaks, I'll wrap up with just a few points about the future.
So, good evening. I'm happy to be here to share the results of the 2017 financial audit, as your auditors were required to audit in accordance with two different sets of accounting standards, or auditing standards, sorry, for those generally accepted in the United States, as well as some standards that are specific to government entities. Those standards require us to plan and perform your audit to obtain reasonable assurance that your financial statements are free from material misstatement. What that means is that we use professional judgment to assess where the risk of material statement might be in those financial statements, and that it also means that we didn't test every single transaction that occurred throughout the year. You hired us to express opinions on the results of our audit, and for the Town, we actually expressed four different opinions. The first opinion is on the financial statements themselves. The second covers the internal control over the financial reporting and compliance with laws and regulations, also commonly referred to as the Yellow Book Report. And then, the last two opinions cover whether the Town was in compliance with requirements related to the federal and state grants that you receive and administer on behalf of the federal and state government. I'm pleased to report that the Town did receive four unmodified opinions, on all four. That is the highest level of assurance that we can give you that those financial statements are free from the material misstatement, as well as in compliance with any laws and regulations and compliance requirements when it comes to the grant funding. Those auditing standards also require us to communicate certain things to you. We do that in two ways. One, through this presentation itself, as well as through a letter that accompanied your staff report. And there's just a few things in that letter that I want to highlight for you. One is that we do want to confirm with you that we were independent and maintained our independence throughout the audit. There was one significant change in policy related to the implementation of GASP-73. This is the second half, so if you happen to remember last year, but there was a part of 73 last year and a new part this year. Basically, what happened this year is that you had to pull on the full liability of your law enforcement officer's separation allowance, so you'll see an $8.5 million prior period adjustment that was a result of implementing that standard. There are a significant amount of estimates included in your financial statements. Those include your allowance for your doubtful accounts, mainly for the utility, depreciation of your capital assets, your pension liabilities, your other post-employment benefit liabilities, and your claims related to your self-insurance. As Karen mentioned, there were no results, no adjustments as a result of the audit, and again, that means that the books and records that they gave us to audit, as well as the financial statements, were exactly what you got in your financial statements. And it also means that they've got very good processes to capture all the activity and report it correctly for the Town. So I would just like to thank Karen and her team for the tremendous amount of work that it does take for them to prepare for us to come in and audit the books. They make the audit process very smooth and efficient because they provide us timely with the information we need and make us a priority when we're here. We just really appreciate that and want to express some gratitude. That's all I have. I'll be glad for any questions.
Wrap up and then see if you have any questions for either April or I. So, just a brief moment, when we're looking ahead, I want to talk about what happened yesterday. It was supposed to happen today, and that was the utility revenue bond sale. It was scheduled for today. The interest rate markets had been very volatile, and yesterday, we had the opportunity to move ahead with that sale, and it was the right decision. We saved $8.6 million yesterday.
Wow.
Yay!
So, that will also relieve pressure on the utility rates in the future. So those savings will be spread over the next 20 years. So I'm really pleased with that. It's been up and down over the last month since we brought this to you the last time, so when we had good results yesterday, we were able to move quickly on them. And our underwriting team and our lawyers and financial advisors have all served us very well. Very proud of that team, and especially our Deputy Treasurer, Mary Beth Huber, who's handled this pretty much single-handedly, and is just a tremendous asset to the Town, so I want to appreciate her as well. As you know, we've been tweaking our financial management approach with some quarterly reviews. We'll be working this year to strengthen our General Fund projections with some new models and things like that, and preparing for a new normal as our growth slows. Anything that we do is all about preserving our ability to be nimble and flexible and maintain those AAA bond ratings that indicate our creditworthiness and compare us to all the other governments and the financial management of the Town. So with that, April and I are both here to answer any questions for you.
Questions? It was too excellent. No questions for either one of you. Mr. Stiegel?
You know, I think it's really important, because the council is so gracious on the way you appreciate the staff and you compliment the staff, and you're just really amazing at that. But as I know, certainly, both the professionals here tonight would tell you that it can be accounted for perfectly, and the fact that the team accounts for, without any adjusting journal entries, it's really ridiculous. I don't have any, with a budget of our size, I don't have any way of describing that, that I wouldn't have thought that that was possible. You know, usually, there's going to be a couple, like you should have booked it under office supplies, and instead, it was under small equipment. You know, just inadvertent mistakes and the fact that there are none with a budget of our size is just remarkable, and I know our auditors would certainly say the same. But then, for our auditing team, our auditors, they could find, nitpick things that don't matter, and, you know, auditors are really well-known to do that. They have to find something, because that's not possible. Well, our auditors don't do that, and I haven't seen an auditing team that really doesn't feel the need to kind of focus on irrelevant things, just so they can show they worked. And so I think that speaks very highly of our auditors. And then, when it comes to the council, over the last year, in particular, the bond sale reflects it best, you have trusted us and given us additional flexibility to, as Karen was saying, to be nimble and respond. And without that trust that you've given us, those millions of dollars would not have happened. And so, we've asked you in several instances, and we'll still ask for more, that if we continue to report to you and tell you what's going on and keep you informed, if you allow us to make decisions in the field, those decisions will be very well-done, and it will produce benefits for the KERY taxpayer. And so, you're not going to compliment yourself, but it all begins with you. And so, without that confidence in us, none of those things would happen. So, thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Stiegel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, April. Another great year, great work, and please thank your staff for all the hours and the dedication and commitment they have in keeping us one of the strongest financial municipalities around.
Thank you. Thank you for making this a great place to work, so that they want to be here and do their best.
Thanks. Okay, we move to our third item on the agenda. It's the Public Speaks Out portion of the agenda. We've included instructions for speaking at Public Speaks Out on the printed agenda. And if you'd like to speak at Public Speaks Out, I'd ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes for their comments and may speak on any topic unless it is a public hearing. Three-minute time limit will be enforced, to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer on the podium, and it starts out with a green light, and when the green light turns to a yellow light, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. When the yellow light turns into a flashing red light, that means your time has expired. And at that point, I'll interrupt you, not trying to be mean or rude, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers. To have an efficient Public Speaks Out item, we ask that groups have a spokesperson who speaks on behalf of the group to reduce repetitive comments. Also, if you'd like to speak after the speaker currently speaking, we had asked that you take a stand over there by the steps to be ready to talk. we had asked you to take a stand over there by the steps to be ready to take the podium as soon as possible because there is a one-hour time limit on Public Speaks Out. It also signals me that there are additional speakers to speak. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting. Please respect that by not applauding, making remarks from your seats, or anything that may distract from the meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Good evening, Town Council. My name is Nathaniel Green. I've been a resident here in Cary for the last three and a half years and continue to love living here. There, there's three things I just want to say tonight. The first two are very brief, just that there's two items on the consent agenda. One has to do with the condemnation resolutions for the Carpenter Fire Station Road Bridge. The decision to allow condemnation of property is always a difficult one, but know that you have the neighborhood and citizen support as we are very excited for this project to get underway and move forward. Similarly, we're also very excited about the future Panther Creek Greenway. And due to a number of bid issues, it sounds like that project will have to go to rebid. We are very excited for the, the future that that and the future benefits that that project holds. And again, are in full support of doing what staff is recommending to do. My main reason, though, for coming to you tonight is just to explain, again, another experience I've had with the town and our town staff. Every time I feel I like, I peel back a layer of Cary, I just am, continue to be more impressed. The last two weeks, I've had the pleasure of serving on an artist selection panel to choose the artists for two new parks in northwestern Cary. The, that are now being referred to as the Park on Carpenter Fire Station Road and the Park on McCrimmon Parkway. This, this panel was led by Denise Dickens. Lyman Collins, our Cultural Resources Manager, was also on it. And I was thrilled to, and honored to be selected, but I found the process invigorating and inspiring. And I told Denise at the end of the, the panel that I really wanted just to come publicly to express my jubilation, and I, I do choose that word carefully, about the whole process and then the end result. We're very excited for the ideas that some of our artists put forth. And I'm very incredibly excited about the selection of the artists that we have for the parks. And I, I really think getting them involved early is, is going to be a great thing for that area of Cary. It really makes me understand why it was, why our town had a gold medal award for our park system and a, and a newfound appreciation, primarily as a scientist, for a more artistic approach in understanding the impact that the extra CR that I often forget to mention in our PR/CR department has on making Cary great. So, I commit to you and publicly that I'll never forget CR again. It is the Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Department. And so, again, thank you. We have tremendous staff. Thank you, Denise. Thank you, Lyman. And anyway, thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Next speaker, please. Anyone for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, we'll close Public Speaks Out. And we'll move to the consent agenda. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to take a moment to...
Anything but.
You can speak for the public hearings. If you're here for Weldon Ridge or one of those public hearings, you have an opportunity to speak. It's coming up. No problem. For the, we're at the fourth item on the agenda, consent agenda. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, we're going to take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes, operational policy updates, naming rights, sponsorship renewal at Wake Med Soccer Park, and amendment of the Carolina FC sublease, condemnation resolutions for the Carpenter Fire Station Road Bridge improvements project, 17REZ-18 Chapel Hill Road rezoning and associated consistency statement, Cary sports venue assessment, Panther Creek Greenway and Mills Park Trailhead bid award. Would council members like any of these items pulled for discussion from the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And now we move to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that applied for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Instead of three minutes to speak, you now have five minutes for your comments. Our first public hearing is 17REZ-13 Weldon Ridge PDD amendment. Senior Planner Katie Dry will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this item tonight, but it will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and their recommendation, and will return to us in a few months for action. Mrs. Dry.
Good evening, council. This is a request to amend the existing Weldon Ridge Plan Development District along unaddressed property on Yates Store Road. Weldon Ridge is located in the western part of Cary, crossing the Wake and Chatham County line, as shown on the red star on this map. The site for this rezoning is located on the western side of Yates Store Road, it's between the American Tobacco Trail and the Chatham County line. You can see the Chatham County line is this red line indicated here. This is a copy of the Weldon Ridge Plan Development District Master Land Use Plan. The rezoning for tonight applies to the S1 tract and the SF6 tract, which are outlined in red. S1 has an existing entitlement to allow for a school and a church use, and SF6 allows for a single-family residential. When you overlay the Plan Development District Master Plan, you can see that the tracks for S1 and SF6 start at the intersection of Yates Store Road and Weldon Ridge Boulevard and run south along Yates Store Road down to Eland Hall Road. This rezoning is not proposing to change the uses in S1, but simply to modify the boundaries of the uses that are already permitted. So first, I'll start with the S1 tract. This allows currently for the use of a school, preschool, daycare, and church use. It's 58 acres. The applicants are proposing to modify the boundaries, as shown here. They're proposing to reduce the size of the tract from 58 to 37 acres. It will also break out the tract into two sub-districts, S1A, which will allow for a school. S1B will remain as currently approved, and it will allow for a school, preschool, daycare, or church use. For the purpose of the rezoning, the town cannot differentiate between the type of school which may go on the site, meaning that a school use or any type of school, that's a K-12 school, could go on the site, meaning public, private, or even charter schools. The zoning consideration and decision, it will be whether to allow the bond, the boundary for the existing school location to be moved. Next is a tract called SF6. This is the residential tract that currently allows for single-family development with a maximum of five units per acre. This proposal is asking to move the tract and increase it in size to 34.7 acres. It's also proposing to decrease the number of units per acre from five dwellings, units per acre to three dwelling units per acre maximum. Because of the size of the tract, it's increasing the maximum number of lots that would be allowed, would be 104 lots, given that three units per acre maximum. They're also proposing a boundary, with this boundary modification, to increase the buffer adjacent to the American Tobacco Trail from 50 feet to 75 feet. Because the site is located in the Chatham County, in Chatham County, the rezoning is evaluated using the guidance of the Imagine Cary Community Plan and also the, the Chatham Cary Joint Land Use Plan. I'd also like to note that you've recently seen a comprehensive plan amendment associated with this site, because the site, again, is in Chatham County and the Joint Chatham Cary Land Use Plan applies. The previous land use plan reflected the use entitlement associated with the current Weldon Ridge PDD. The town, the town of Cary and Chatham County both approved a request to amend the plan in August of 2017. And so, a preliminary analysis of this rezoning request notes that the uses align with the locations as recently approved in the Joint Land Use Plan. Also notes that the residential use is similar to other residential use sizes in the area. According to the Town of Cary GIS maps, the site is impacted by stream buffers. However, field determination of those buffers will occur at the time of development plan review. This slide shows a pedestrian network in the area. While we have no way of knowing how many students from nearby neighborhoods may attend the school at the site, if there are students within the area, this map highlights the properties within a half a mile of the site, which is typically the distance considered for walkability. The red lines on the map indicate sidewalks. The green lines, as you can see with the American Tobacco Trail, this green line as well, indicate greenways, as shown on the Town of Cary's Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan. According to the Move Chapter of the Imagine Cary Community Plan, Yates Store Road is a major thoroughfare. A traffic study is required for a rezoning application when a development's anticipated to generate 100 or more peak hour trips. There was a traffic study associated with this site, and the traffic study evaluated a total of 13 intersections within one mile of the site. This also includes intersections at the site entrance. I'd also like to note that we have heard concerns from citizens regarding their concern over lack of signalization at Yates Store Road and Carpenter Fire Station Road, which is north this image here. That intersection was actually outside of the one-mile boundary for the study area for the traffic study. However, we do have good news to share about that intersection. It has recently been approved for a signal by NC DOT, and it's in the design stage for a signal with Town of Cary participation. The study took into consideration the residential use that's proposed, as well as a charter school with a maximum of 150,000 square feet of floor area and 2,200 students. They also took into consideration a minimum of onsite stacking or carpool lanes of 7,281 linear feet, which is approximately a mile and a half, and 30-minute staggered start times. The recommendations for the traffic study included recommended improvements for the intersections of Yates Store Road and New Hope Church Road, Yates Store Road and Weldon Ridge Boulevard, and Sensonal, and Sensonal Ferry Lane at Yates Store Road, Weldon Ridge Boulevard and Cary Glen Boulevard, Morrisville Parkway and Weldon Ridge Boulevard, Morrisville Parkway and Green Hope School Road, Morrisville Parkway and East Farrell. There was also several recommendations for onsite improvements, which would be associated with an extension of Sensonal Ferry into the site, as shown here. The applicant has agreed to study the intersection of Sensonal Ferry and Yates Store Road, and if it meets warrants, construct a signal. They've also proposed, through a zoning condition, to complete the Sensonal Ferry extension and the traffic improvements that would be associated with that. Staff also notes that this intersection number two here on the map, which is the intersection of Yates Store Road and Weldon Ridge Boulevard, is a crucial intersection that will need a solution developed. And the town will continue to look at this intersection with the applicant and with NC DOT as the site moves forward. I'd also like to speak to the carpool lane length. The carpool lane length is determined based on predictive queuing model developed by NC DOT. In this case, the applicant has offered, as a zoning condition, to have a minimum of 7,281 linear feet of onsite carpool lanes. This is based on the size of the site, as well as the condition that they've proposed to stagger the start times. In addition to the zoning process, there will be multiple opportunities for checking in for enforcement for the queuing associated with the school. This includes the NC DOT driveway permit process and the town's requirement for a traffic management plan, which is required when a school has an enrollment of 200 or more students. The traffic management plan would be developed and approved as part of the development plan for the site. And while we don't know at this time the exact layout and operation of the carpool lane, the applicant will be required to meet all of the town and state requirements. And so, an example of a carpool lane operation is the Cary Christian School with approximately 20 acres, which is a comparable size site to this location. Cary Christian School uses multiple drop-off points. They have staggered start times and a circular vehicle travel path. So, as stated before, this site, if approved, will be required to develop carpool lanes with a traffic management plan and receive approval from the town and NC DOT. Another consideration for this site is new state legislation that was recently adopted and became effective in August of 2017. The state legislation limits requirements that towns and NC DOT can place on schools, and this includes K-12 schools, including public, private, and charter schools. Towns and NC DOT can only require improvements that are physically connected to the driveway. And the cost of those improvements must be reimbursed by NC DOT or the town for those improvements, including right-of-way acquisition. For this case, the applicant has offered, through a zoning condition, to complete their frontage improvements per the Cary Community Plan, as well as the off-site improvements they've offered through a zoning condition, and not seek reimbursement from the town or NC DOT. There was a neighborhood meeting held for the site on October 4th, 2017. There were questions and concerns at that meeting associated with the possibility of a school going in at the location, road improvements, also questions about the current entitlement of the Weldon Ridge Plan Development District, what's currently allowed, and exactly how the, the boundary modification would work. In preparation for the public hearing tonight, sites within 800 feet of the subject site were notified via mail. Site was also posed to a blue public hearing signs and legal ads were placed on the town's website. So this concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is here to share comments with council. And following the public hearing, staff will be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dry. This time, I'd invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Glenda Top with Glenda S. Top and Associates, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. Staff did an excellent job going over the proposed rezoning, and I will go over some of the highlights. Weldon Ridge is a planned development district that was originally approved in 2004. Basically, the PDD has been built out, except for the two parcels that are being considered tonight, which is SF6 and S1. As staff pointed out, the request is to modify the boundaries of SF6 and S1, which is what is requiring the rezoning process. Currently, SF6 is approved for a maximum of 46 residential units. And the uses that can be allowed today include detached dwellings, patio dwellings, attached residential, and zero lot line. And also, the minimum lot size currently with SF6 is 5,200 square feet. SS, S1 is approved for a school and church complex with a maximum of 240,000 square feet. And, and in describing the school and church complex, it also includes the possibility for a daycare and a preschool. With this amendment, the number of units for the SF6 tract is being increased to 104. I do want to point out that in going back through the, the Weldon Ridge PDD and looking at all the tracks that were approved and the potential density of what was allowed versus what was actually built with the 104 units, this only allows for a net increase of 23 units from what was originally approved in the Weldon Ridge PDD. Also, as pointed out, all the uses, except for detached residential, have been taken away from the SF6 site. And now, the minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet instead of 5,200 square feet. And of course, the density is three units per acre versus the five. The rezoning request shifts the boundary of S1 so that it's located further to the south, adjacent to Yates Store Road. The amendment does break out the S1 site into two different tracks. There's S1A and S1B. S1A, as shown on the map, is for the school site and just a school. The S1 site, excuse me, the S1B site still have, still has the uses that are currently allowed today, which include a church, preschool... which include a church, preschool, daycare, and a school. For the purposes of the traffic analysis, the size of the school that was modeled was a K-12 school, which is what is currently approved within Weldon Ridge, and roughly the same enrollment. I do want to point out that the location of the school is proposed adjacent to Yates Store Road to provide access closer to and from the thoroughfare, thus keeping most of the school traffic off local and collector residential streets, which is different from the location of the school in the original PDD. Just briefly, because staff did point this out, because the property was located in the joint Cary-Chatham County Land Use Plan, we did have to go through the Land Use Plan Amendment before we could submit the rezoning. What this meant is both Chatham County and the Town of Cary had to approve the land use amendment before we could come to you for the rezoning. The Land Use Plan Amendment did go before the Chatham County Commissioners. It was approved unanimously, went before the town council here, and it was also approved unanimously. I do want to point out that with the amendment for the SF6 tract, there was a note on the plan that the density would not exceed 3.31 dwelling units per acre. However, as I've pointed out, with the zoning request and the capping of the number of units to 104, actually, the density is 2.99, which is less than what was approved with the joint land use plan, both by Cary and Chatham County. And with that, we are in compliance with the joint plan. Want to talk a little bit about the traffic analysis. As staff pointed out, a traffic report was required. For the purpose of the study, the study did look at a K-12 school. The study needed to look at the worst-case scenario, since it is not known what size school may be built, both from an area and a student population perspective. The staff report lists the offsite improvements that the applicant has agreed to as part of its zoning conditions. And as staff pointed out, with that new state legislation concerning schools, the applicant has agreed to not seek reimbursement for improvements on the frontage, offsite improvements, and also sidewalks, because we also found out that sidewalks could be part of this, so we would not be asking for reimbursement for sidewalks either. In the staff report, there are several policies that were identified that this rezoning complies with. Just want to touch on them briefly. Under the Live Chapter, there were two listed that we believe we comply with. One is maintaining the neighborhood character. Again, we have modified the residential uses to only be detached residential and increased the lot size from 5,200 to 8,000, which we believe is more in keeping with what's out there today, providing more housing options in this area. A lot of the homes in Weldon Ridge are single-family. This does allow for a little bit of a smaller lot size that we do feel will continue to enhance the mix in that area. There's also one policy in the Work Chapter that talks about promoting high-quality education. As council knows, Weldon Ridge has shown a school since 2004 for this part of Cary, and we believe that this rezoning would allow for the potential for another educational opportunity out in this part of Cary. Under the Shape Chapter, it talks about providing appropriate transitions between land uses. Again, both of these land uses currently are allowed in the PDD. We are complying with the buffer and streetscape requirements, and as staff pointed out, we've increased the buffer adjacent to the American Tobacco Trail from 50 to 75 feet. And lastly, I just want to mention the Future Growth Framework map. The properties that are identified for this rezoning are part of the suburban neighborhoods development category. The predominant use type for this development category is single-family detached, which is being proposed now for the SF6 site. There are several incidental and other use types identified in this development category. One is civic and institutional uses, and the school would fall into this category, so both of the uses that are being proposed are permitted within the suburban neighborhood development category. As stated in the staff report, the purpose of a rezoning is to determine whether or not the land uses and densities allowed in the proposed zoning district are appropriate for this site, and in our opinion, we believe the answer to this question is yes. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the vision and policies of the Cary Community Plan. We're also in compliance with the Joint Cary-Chatham Plan. The uses that are currently being looked at are currently approved in the PDD. If we were not modifying the boundaries of S1, someone could come in today and not rezone the property, come in with a site plan for a school, but the modification to the boundaries is what's requiring this amendment. But I thought it was important to point out that, right now, today, a school is approved for Weldon Ridge. We do believe that the location that we're showing the school adjacent to Yates Store Road is a better location from an access standpoint. Also, the residential area will have access to the American Tobacco Trail. The Cary Community Plan does talk about the importance of access to greenways and parks, which both the school and the residential area will have. Also want to point out that we will be providing sidewalks and connectivity between the uses that are being proposed, and we feel that with the approval of this rezoning, that finally the vision of Weldon Ridge can be seen from what was approved in 2004. I'm happy to answer questions, and there are other people here tonight from the team who are available to answer questions also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Top. So, now's the time for the public hearing, 17 REZ 13 Weldon Ridge PDD Amendment, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak on Weldon Ridge?
Thank you, council, for this opportunity to speak on behalf of my community. My name is Ms. Hendricks, and I've been a resident of the Weldon Ridge neighborhood since its inception. We were literally the first people to sleep in the neighborhood. One of my big questions is why wasn't the intersection of Ivy Shaw Road and Weldon Ridge Boulevard analyzed in the traffic study? Ivy Shaw Road provides a very quick backdoor entry to Yates Store Road and this new school development via Eon Hall at the end. The tar shows multiple failures of multiple intersections for option two, which seems to be the preferred one for the developer and applicant, especially in the morning. These same trips will also occur outside of the peak hours of 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. The solution really is to improve the roads and following all the recommendations in the tar. The road improvement recommendations often state, quote, "conduct a full signal warrant analysis prior to the build-out of the development." The applicant has not offered to make the majority of these improvements. My big concern is why should the taxpayers be responsible for the impact of a for-profit charter school? Are the taxpayers to support a for-profit institution beyond the over $4,000 per student taxpayer money they will already receive, while this applicant has announced that they will have $2 million in profit in their first year of operation? Prior to this new legislation limiting what a developer of a school can be held responsible for, Wake County Public Schools was responsible for all traffic improvements. I don't see how this law is helping our education system at all. If we look at some of the improvements, especially one in Figure 16B, the improvements not provided for by the for-profit school, there are two signalized intersections, Yates Store and Weldon Ridge, and Weldon Ridge Boulevard and Morrisville Parkway, and approximately a quarter-mile of improvements. We're looking at over $600,000 in costs. Is the Town of Cary to pay for this, the NC DOT? It's not being covered by the for-profit school, the applicant. We're very concerned about this, as we would like to see beyond those two traffic signals. We'd like to see all the improvements recommended in the traffic analysis. One of my main concerns as a resident is the safety of our residents. Without the developer putting in the traffic lights and street improvements recommended within the tar, we may never get them. The tar states, quote, "It should be noted that it is not expected that the nine intersections listed would satisfy the MUTCD eight-hour and four-hour warrants," which the NC DOT favors for the installation of a traffic signal, end quote. The tar assumes that they will stagger by half an hour, the K-5 through the 6-12 grades. It suggested that it will also stagger its time with the Thali start of Thali School. What consideration is being given to the start of the public schools in that area? What consideration is given to the public school buses that are currently making double runs on a very tight timeline, and they currently are not able, on a consistent basis, to deliver their students to the school before the late bells? The congestion that can result from this without the improvements recommended in the tar will only worsen the situation, especially for children at Mills Park Elementary, which I can speak for as a parent of two of them. We also have concerns with the queuing for the drop-off and pickup. Results, quote, from the tar itself on page 70, quote, "Results from the internal analysis showed that the storage provided by the loop road is not sufficient to handle the expected stacking," end quote. And this statement is based off the number of student and parent drivers of 1,290 for an expected 2,200 students. I would like to see some statistics for an urban charter school that can back this number up, because I sincerely believe we will have a lot more drivers dropping off students at this school. Per the MST, they suggest the queue should be 11,435 feet. The current recommendation is 7,281 within the tar. Assuming a 50-50 split due to the start times, using the trip numbers within the tar, we'll still see 565 trips. What about the 200-plus cars that can't fit into this queue? That's 4,000 feet of overflow onto our neighborhood streets. Let's address the queue itself. Can there be more lanes added? How will it successfully drop off these students safely? Then there's parking issues. You will have 268 staff assumed there, dividing the number of students across all grades. You'll have 338 juniors and seniors with a potential for 606 people wanting to park onsite all day. Sketch Plan C1 only allows for 343 space parking spaces. We know these students will come park in our neighborhood. That's our main concern in some aspects. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks. Next speaker, please. Ladies and gentlemen, no, no. Please do not do that. Please do not applaud. This is a business meeting. We need to focus on the speakers. We don't applaud at our meetings. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Mulligan. I live on Sea Line Drive in one of the adjacent areas. I'll modify my statements to shorten them. Ms. Hendricks.
Could you give me your name one more time?
Thomas Mulligan.
Thank you.
602 Sea Line Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you to staff for the communications and the reports that we were able to review. My comments will be shortened because of Ms. Hendricks. When you look past the overview presented by applicant, there are serious flaws in the development plan. As previously stated, queuing is a big issue. The MST recommends 11,435 feet. The applicant only has 5,972 linear feet, which is 82% of the traffic study, and only 52% of what the MST requires. And so, all parents know that queuing never goes quite as planned or designed. Like the prior statement, where are these cars going to fit? There's all these people that are going to drive in and know where to go, so it'll back up. Parking, as previously stated, at 343 sites, there's 268 staff members. That leaves 75 spots for all the seniors and juniors that can park or theoretically park or drive to that school. That is just unreasonable. I have no idea where you expect them to go, except the streets that everybody here lives on, so that would be, of course, a safety issue. Traffic, the early learning center moves to the church site, per the diagrams, so that, I don't know if that was included in the traffic study. There are 11 impacted intersections, as was noted. The developer was going to fix a couple of them fully, and the others, they were going to do partially. They refused to do some of the recommended improvements, including installation of the advanced traffic management system. According to the traffic study, quote, "Two intersections are anticipated to experience significant impacts from the site-generated traffic. Due to the relative high volume of traffic generated by the proposed development site, significant delays in queuing are expected at some of the study intersections within the study area." So, as previously stated, we have children in this area, we have pools in this area, we have buses in this area now, and think that the queuing, the traffic, the traffic signals, definitely not fully addressed. There'll be a whole bunch of people that drive to these schools when it's built out that have nowhere to go except the side streets. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mulligan. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Mischa Locklear. I live at 613 Rolling Springs Drive. Native North Carolinian, lived in West Cary for almost 15 years now. In that duration of time, I have owned three homes, one of which is a Chatham County home with a Cary address. So, I come to this public hearing with both perspectives in mind from Wake County and Chatham County. My children are elementary school age in third and fourth grade. When I bought my Chatham County home in 2008, my son was seven months old, and I had wishful thinking that this school would come to fruition at some point in time. So, I would like to point out and remind the council members and everyone in this room that the school entitlement does predate six schools within a five-mile radius. It predates Mills Park Elementary, Mills Park Middle School, Panther Creek High School, Austin Ridge Elementary School, White Oak, and most recently, off of Yates Store Road, Horton's Creek. So, let's fast forward 10 years, 12 years now to the present. I would like to think that, looking back at that point in time, it seemed very logical to put a school at this particular location, because there was nothing there, and it was primarily undeveloped land. Now, 10 years, 12 years later, six schools later, I question truly the need for another school at this particular location, especially keeping in mind and building on the comments of my prior neighbors and speakers, that if we put a 2,000-seat school at this particular location, you will now basically flank Cary Park subdivision, which I live in, by two huge schools. So, I'm imagining all of the traffic that currently exists at Mills Park Elementary School and Middle School, which is about 1,800 students. I'm thinking about all the buses that we see traveling those roads, and now I'm thinking about all of those buses disappearing and turning into cars and carpools, which would exist for a charter school, which currently has no busing system. So, that's very concerning to me and to many other citizens and neighbors. I would like to also remind the council, which I'm sure you don't need to be reminded, that the American Tobacco Trail truly is a crown jewel, amenity of this particular area that we live in, and it adds tremendous value to the neighborhoods, tremendous value to our homes, and there are many residents and citizens that share my opinion that bringing a 2,000-seat school to this location completely negates all of that. So, I would like for you to take that into consideration. Again, looking back historically, placing a school at this particular location, right adjacent to the American Tobacco Trail, I struggle to find the logic in that, again, considering that that is one of our biggest amenities. So, what I would like to ask the council to do is to really press pause on the rezoning and truly consider what is needed at this moment in time for the neighborhoods and for the citizens, not to consider or fall back on what the legacy or historical perspective has been of this particular piece of land. As a citizen, as I have attempted to navigate this process, and the council and staff members have been very helpful in providing me with information, so I am very appreciative of that, but what I have been very disappointed to learn is that by virtue of the entitlement, it basically renders the council powerless in being able to research or ask basic questions as to the performance of the school or the type of school that would most adequately benefit this area. And I find that to be extremely troublesome at this point, because if we were allowed to provide you or you were allowed to research this particular school's background, I'm not so confident that you would feel that it's a good fit, especially when you consider all the top-performing schools in this immediate area. So, bringing in a mid-to-low-tier charter school, in our opinion, has little chance of long- of long-term survival when it's surrounded by so many top-performing schools. Again, construction of another school would most likely impact our neighborhood value and appeal, which is of great concern. When I'm thinking about all of the buses that travel these roads, a lot of these roads still underdeveloped, as many people have pointed out at this point, a lot of work to be done, I'm, again, thinking about all of that carpool traffic and the buses trying to navigate that safely. I'm also thinking about pedestrian safety of families that cross over Yates Store Road via the greenway or to get to the greenway. So I would just like to say that this entitlement has not served us for the past two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve years. So why should citizens continue to support its existence in light of its negative impacts? And I'd like for you to consider either dissolving the entitlement for the school altogether or repurposing that for expanded parking.
Thank you, Ms. Locklear.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Ryan Anthony, and I'm here to urge you to oppose the zoning changes that would enable this proposed charter school. My wife and I have lived in West Cary for ten years, and we've owned our house in Weldon Ridge for eight years. We have three children, ages six and under. The rezoning and the proposed location for the new school are well within that walking distance that you saw on the slide a few minutes ago. It may seem like a family like mine is a prime target for a school like this one, but for us, that couldn't be farther, further from the truth. When you compare the ratings from North Carolina School Report Cards Rating System that Leslie Stobert emailed to the council earlier this afternoon, you'll see that the existing Cardinal Charter Schools' performance ranks far below the high marks of the other schools, the other public schools that were mentioned by my previous speakers. And I'm not the only one who has concerns about the proposed school's performance. Here are some written comments from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction's formal review of the school's application to operate in North Carolina. The reviewers questioned the applicant's reasoning for a school at this location, saying, "It remains unclear how this school provides an unmet need. There is no evidence of educational need provided." They called out inadequacies in the applicant's plan to serve underprivileged populations by saying, "The applicant intends to enroll ten to fifteen percent students on free or reduced-price lunch. Only planning for one bus brings into question the ability of the school's leaders to adequately serve these students." And also related to that one bus, they stated, "The school intends to recruit students from three counties but is limiting the transportation plan to a two-to-four-mile radius from the school." And regarding the management fees to the Florida company that I'm sure others will talk about as well, they stated, "The applicant needs to explain what they receive from Charter Schools USA in exchange for the one-point-one-million-dollar management company fee in year one, and if that fee is tied to student enrollment, if so, is there a cap on the revenue percentage?" And they said, "This matters because the unrealistic, this matters given the unrealistic enrollment plan for years one and two." So this, as others have stated, the one-bus issue and the resulting carpool numbers are just staggering to me, and just, I'm going to skip over some of what I wrote because everybody else already stated it, but I just can't imagine the cut-through traffic on the map that was, that I brought with me. Imagine if you were sitting in traffic on Yates Store Road, you'd probably look for a cut-through on one of the residential side streets like my own. I knew when I bought my house that a school was sketched into this spot since the early two thousands, but I assumed that whatever was built would have the same wow factor as everything else that I'd seen developed in West Cary at that time. This particular school at this location just doesn't feel right. This rezoning request feels like a hasty attempt at enabling a lackluster and possibly unneeded school to be built on one of the few undeveloped sites left in Cary. Maybe a site off of seven fifty-one in Chatham County would be better suited for this proposed school. I urge you to vote against any changes that would allow the school to be built as planned. If you decide a school is appropriate for this site, please hold its developers to the highest degree of standards, as you've done with other developments in Cary in recent years. And please encourage public busing so neighborhoods like mine are less impacted. And thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My family and I moved here-
Could you give us your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My name is Baron Al Fati. I live at Up Rock Drive at Weldon Ridge. My apologies, five minutes. My family and I moved here from Toronto, Canada, and we were fortunate enough to be able to pick and choose which area that we could live in. We toured the county, toured the state, and we chose West Cary, and not lightly. We chose West Cary essentially because of its beautiful neighborhoods, the parkways, the greenways. You can see the thoughtful town planning coming from a city of four million to here. You could see the thought process and you could see the future vision. But most importantly, we chose it because of the number of schools that were high-ranking in the state. We wanted the future for our children. We're not looking to move again. We're here to stay, and we felt that this area will provide the best opportunity for our children to get educated, to go to university, and contribute to the society. However, with respect to the, all the work that has been done, we feel like this rezoning process comes across as rushed, incomplete, incomplete, and really without due diligence. The applicant mentioned that the math used was to get the worst-case scenario. The wor- I feel like the math used is really giving them the best-case scenario. Eleven hundred cars for a two thousand two hundred student capacity? I haven't come across any precedent, and I've done some, I don't want to say amazing, I've done some deep research into trying to find out the number of carpools. Mills Park has about the same number of cars that the applicant is saying is the worst-case scenario, and Mills Park offers busing. So I'm not quite sure how they come up with that number. And the number that they put forth in the traffic studies doesn't take into account the new, the additional housing that they're going to also build. The model that they've used, I don't think is quite realistic. Given the research, given the pa- the traffic patterns for their new, their school in Cary, the current school, and the one that has opened up in Apex recently, perhaps the traffic study could be carried out using those two models and the impact on the neighborhood. There've been newspaper reports and there've been TV reports of speeding, cars parking on the streets, just mistake after mistake and wrong assumption after wrong assumption that impacts the local neighborhood. As my pre- I don't want to repeat myself, but in closing, I'm going to urge the council to reconsider this position and reconsider the approval that they gave back in two thousand and four. A lot has changed since then, and within our house, which is within walking distance of this school, there are seven highly-ranked schools, right, from elementary through high school. I question the unmet need, and I question the math that the applicant has put forward as far as the traffic flow goes. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Sakib Khan. I live on Sentinel Ferry Lane, and myself and my neighbor here are probably the people who are closest, possibly closest, to this development that's been proposed, and that's why we are probably the most impacted among all the neighbors. And I can truly say that what I feel is what most of my neighbors feel, because we've spoken to them and we have discussed it over time, and the, we have a few concerns and complaints about this whole thing, rezoning process, okay? First of all, this school, if you look at the way the entrance is being defined, there's only one proper entrance into the school coming off from Yates Store Road into the neighborhood, which is right across from, that's, we're basically extending Sentinel Ferry Lane into this, this new subdivision area or what school area. And that location itself, it's so congested right now that the only way the new cars and the new traffic impact is going to happen is that people are going to start cutting through our neighborhood, and that will have two significant impacts on us. First of all, there's a safety issue because my kid walk, kids walk from their bus stop to my house on Sentinel Ferry Lane, and with additional traffic cutting through this neighborhood just to get into this new school, I cannot imagine the risk that are there that, because of the safety concerns and with all the kids moving from, especially during when they're coming off the school time at four PM, for example. And the other is the noise pollution that it's going to cause in the neighborhood, okay? We are a very calm, peaceful neighborhood right now, okay? And adding that many number of cars to the, to the existing neighborhood, it just, especially even if they stagger it at two times during the day, in the mo- in the morning and the evening, that adds significantly to the noise in that neighborhood, okay? And it will disrupt our peaceful neighborhood in that context. On addition to that, the other, there, if you look at the other traffic impact on this, because of this proposal, the road, for example, that comes from Morrisville Carpenter, Morrisville Parkway into Yates Store Road, which is Weldon Ridge Boulevard, is a two-lane road right now with limited expansion possibilities because we live there. I walk on it every day, and with that happening, the number of cars that are going to be coming in, I can imagine the backup that will flow from Yates Store Road towards Morrisville Parkway, making it, making most of the residents' life hard to get to work in the morning in reasonable timeframes because of the fact of the backing. And I can tell you for sure, my kid go to Mills Park and I look at the backup that happens at Mills Park and which is way inside, which has no impact on the main road, and I can just translate with that, given that this school is going to be a two-thousand-student school. It's a significantly larger school compared to Mills Park in that context, okay? And, and just transporting the impact that they have on their morning carpool lanes to what's going to happen here, I can just imagine what my life and my neighbors' life is going to be with this proposal. So I urge you guys, to you gentlemen and ladies, to reconsider this proposal and look at it from a, from the perspective of the neighbors who live there right now and the resident who live, live there right now, and understand the impact it's going to have on our lives, on our, on, on, on a daily basis. In addition, not just on quality of life, but monetary aspects as well. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, sir, for giving me the opportunity to speak here. I'm Shivanan Kamath, and I live just a two-house next to Sakib at, on the Sentinel Ferry Lane. And I don't want to repeat what other people have said, but one of the biggest important points is that ten to twelve years before, in two thousand and four, when this proposal was put forward, there were no schools, and now we have six to seven school. And also, I would just want to point out that Austin Ridge Middle School has also been planned in twenty nineteen, if I'm not, or twenty twenty. So there's another school going to be added in that, within that small, near the Austin Ridge. So my option would be to consider is that, do we really need a school from K to twelve in that area after twelve years, you know, passed? I, as I said, I don't want to report other people's concern, but I am also, will be impacted very much because I live on the Sentinel Ferry Lane. My house is the third house from that stop sign and from the extension side. My two kids, they go to the Mills Park and one goes, in the Mills Park, and now one is in the Panther Creek, and we do see the traffic, you know, when sometime we have to drop our kid to do the carpool. It takes approximately fifteen to twenty minutes minimum to get the school for us to drop from the point after the signal to the school point where we drop the kid. And now if we add this school of two thousand-plus students, I cannot imagine how much the carpool it will be added. And as I've said, there's no plan for bus systems for this school, I think, which is a card, which is going to be a charter school, which is where we're concerned. I would recommend the council to look at the options. Is the school required as of now, after twelve years have been passed? And consider the other options that all of the, my fellow member, fellow citizen has spoken about this. And I think I just want to say, please consider this proposal, and do we really require a school? One more point, I just wanted to make sure that the initial proposal, they're planning to build thirty houses, as if I recall correctly, if the applicant can clear me. Forty, forty houses, and now they're proposing more than hundred, a hundred and four houses. So there will be three times more houses built there, and that also is going to add another additional, you know, the dense, the traffic for that, houses that people will be living there. So I would recommend that to consider that point also, that the applicant is increasing the number of houses that will be built, though they're reducing the density. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Mubarak Chadri. I live in Weldon Ridge Estate, and I've been here six years. And I worked for the US government thirty-two years in federal services combined with the active-duty military. I have done research on audits that AAA reading people do, and we found many of them are not used to, just to identify the faults, they also make sure that they can keep their jobs so that they'll be brought back. I can give you a real-life example, however, I'm not going to mention the unit that I am in, and I have done the research, and since that, Department of Army decided to expel those people that made these mistakes and for their, however, in this research that applicant did, I do not think they used the data that is relevant to today. They used the old data to show that it is necessary and it is not going to be impacted. I, it will not have any impact to the residents of Weldon Ridge. I can tell you currently, as the previous speaker told you, we have way too many schools right now within the five-mile radius of this Weldon Ridge. So it sounds like it's repeated, but it is important. And as a human nature, people will take the shortcut, especially the teenage drivers. Best way to get to that school at the proposed S1A school zone would be the Ivy Shore through the Ellen Hall or Ivy Shore directly and go through the Arbor Three exit from the Ivy Shore. This will put our children at risk. At the same time, our children would be trying to, would try to go to the school bus or after coming back, return on foot because bus stop is in one location and central location. So what do we take? How many children would have to get hurt for someone to say, "Enough is enough. We have enough school." Stop the development of school. Neighborhood is okay, we, there are not going to be other, other neighborhood vehicle will not be coming to the new neighborhood. But school, as you look at the Greystone and all surrounding neighborhoods that south of Weldon Ridge, they'll be driving through the Morrisville Parkway and take Weldon Ridge and try to cut through the neighborhood. And there's other way they could go, there'll be a long way to go. I don't think that would be the human nature to do so. So please do stop that development, and I don't want to say anymore. I think everybody has the same issue, and appreciate your consideration to stop this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, dear council. My name's Gary. I moved from California to Cary for almost five years, and I live in the Weldon Ridge Boulevard, Weldon Ridge community. I think I prepared hands-on primarily for the traffic, and actually I prepare not so professionally compared to the previous ones. So I don't want to add too, a lot on the traffic. I just want to emphasize, like, by comparison, we have the Charter Academy in Cary actually located in Maynard and Harrison. It's actually a two-lane on each way, and if you search on website, you will find some of comments that, one comment I can pick up, that they had horrible experience of carpool. They make it so difficult, and you are in carpool lane for literally forty-five minutes. Particularly, it's well-designed, it's actually the residential area is not so dense compared to Weldon Ridge community and nearby Cary Park community, but still, you can see that it's way, way beyond the design of their staging on-site stacking for the queue. And I don't want to emphasize a lot of traffic because already people, all our neighbor already emphasize that, but I want to emphasize that on application for those development, there's one policy, maintain the neighborhood characters, recognize, preserve, and protect the- there's one policy, maintain the neighborhood characters, recognize, preserve and protect the quality of existing residential neighborhood. And the applicant's comment that the proposed rezoning will have a positive impact on existing neighborhood. So if they do think it's provide a positive impact to us, they have to listen to us. If we say it's negative, it's negative. Yeah.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. Hi. Um, hi, my name's Jenny. Can you hear me?
They'll, they'll adjust in the booth. All you gotta do is talk. You don't have to hold it or anything. They'll make it work.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Jenny. My name's Jenny, Jenny Shi. Um, I have been living in Cary for over twenty years already. Um, I want to, you know, share my experience. I worked as a consultant for a long time and I traveled nationwide and sometimes, you know, worldwide to dif- to, to different countries. But for so many years, you know, overall, I still choose living in Cary. Why? Because Cary is beautiful. It's very beautiful and it's very laid back. People are very nice and they're very relaxed, less traffic. I like Cary. Love it. So, um, for this rezoning, um, I actually do not live in this Weldon Ridge community. But I do live in Cary as a Cary citizen. Um, I would say, um, as a business, you know, um, does this rezoning, uh, follow our Cary long time planning? Uh, Cary, it is a beautiful place. That's why lots of people, people like to live in Cary. Uh, well, this rezoning to make, to add this school, uh, you know, really next to a two lane street to a community, bigger community, more than one, have, uh, you know, Cary Park, Weldon Ridge and, um, uh, Embly together at households probably more than ten thousand. So first of all, is that pretty? Uh, I don't think so. I think a school, no matter the, the charter school, you know, they have a lot of very good students, you know, in the residential. We, we all have a, you know, we all wanna have a good environments, you know, have a relatively private environment. Don't wanna be interfered too much by charter. One. Two, um, and I think, uh, as a, you know, I, I own a small business as well. I think, you know, but put a, a lot of people already addressed the traffic side. So I think I would heard about a lot on that. But as a business person, you know, if I put my show on those beautiful show, um, I think, um, does this worth this rezoning action? Um, so the value for them is you're gonna add one or four detached dwellings and more than thirty, so means you're gonna have, you can build seventy-four more houses. Uh, yes, you can gain some, you know, business value from that, profit from that. However, but, you know, balance the, the, you know, all the people that we just talked about, the traffic and more than ten thousand, you know, the residential houses. If you consider everybody on average have two kids and have two, uh, two senior people. And how many people, or maybe work on the street or maybe play there? And then also you have to monitor the, the traffic around the two hundred sixty intersections. And that is, you build, you build this school here for a long, long time and people have to, you know, have to trade off for your, your choice, day and out, every day. And you consider twenty-two hundred students, twenty-two hundred cars, if you park on the two single lines there every day, every morning, every night. And then you make, you know, probably more than ten thousand, like I said, senior people a- and the kids. You know, every family's kids, you know, ten thousand, thousands of kids and their families. And they just, they have to keep their mind intense every day for your choice. Does this really worth that? That is seventy-four, you know, units, the profit you make from that, does it really worth it? Is this the only option? No. Your original plan without rezoning is much better and everybody likes it. And do you have a, I mean, is this only place, you know, choice make this seventy-four, you know, units profit? No. You have a more, you know, more lots as well. You know, you can, you, you can, you know, try to build more houses by choosing other lots or, or in, in other, you know, yeah, in other nearby places. But this one, this option, you know, obviously against most of the residents, you know, the choice in a little way. So, uh, so just, that's just my opinion. I think from long time view, as well as from the business ethic, business value, it's not worth it. And also just in case it hits one person, you know, how much is it gonna cost for this person in this family's life? Okay, I finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, mayor, our council member. My name is Chun. Uh, I live in Weldon Ridge for the past six years. Um, I just wanna point out that, or I have a couple points. The first thing is, no matter how developers playing with the numbers, they are adding another sixty to seventy units into the neighborhoods. Consider one unit had the four people, that's another three hundred residents into the neighborhood, no matter how they play the numbers. Second, what I really concerned is the traffic. With the sheer size of the school with twenty-two thousand students, the traffic study says there's only eleven hundred cars per day. And that's, that basically says forty percent of students are doing carpool. I'm highly doubt that number is accurate. Um, on the other hand, they assume in the afternoon, those students just disappear out of magic. But don't forget, when they dismissed, our public school is also dismissed at the same time. So we're not only facing traffic jam in the morning, but also in the afternoon. Will our school bus come back in time? Will our school bus be able to get into the community as it should be? And when with the year, consider the daily traffic. Um, so when we can, so I assume if there's an hour, then we consider there are twenty, twenty-seven and seventy-four vehicles per hour. And here's a lot, here's a document I printed out of our NCDOT. I'm, I myself by no means a traffic engineer, or, but I'm an engineer, so I did a little bit of research. And this is a level of service D, which is basically barely acceptable. And for boulevard, for one lane per direction boulevard, it's twenty thousand cars per day. And assuming we only do eighteen hours, that means eleven hundred cars, eleven hundred cars per hour. And this new proposal puts two thousand cars, more than two thousand cars, new cars into this community on Weldon Ridge Boulevard without considering the old existing traffic. So I have a concern, how can we get out our community to send the kids to school? How can we get out the community to go to work with so many cars backing up on Weldon Ridge Boulevard? On the other hand, the traffic study assumes there's an extension of Centifair, Centifair Ferry Lane. And the traffic study also assumes zero, absolutely zero cars where go into that, go into that lane, use our community road. That's how flawed it is. Well, I mean, I'm, I'm, by human nature, people gonna do that. They're gonna cut shot, they're gonna use shortcut, use our community road. And that's gonna pose a significant safety concern. This is a very young community. Every other household have a, a kid under ten year old, I guess. So there are a lot of young kids and there are a lot of, uh, senior people in this community. And with all those cars, plus, there are gonna be bunch of inexperienced drivers from the high school that are gonna pose a significant, significant, significant safety concern to our children and to any residents in this community. Okay, and the last thing, and a lot of people had mentioned before, is who's going to go to this school? Certainly not me because my kids are in Mills Park and it's a great school and I think everybody loves it. Mills Park, as of this year, are, is not even not fully loaded. So I highly doubt the use of the new school. That's my point. Or I, I, I appreciate the council can consider, uh, the proposal and oppose to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Now I'd remind our speakers, please, we have a long night ahead of us. Please don't repeat. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and, uh, council members. I am, uh, my name is Eldous. I live in, uh, Sentinel Ferry Lane. So I'm, uh, one of the impacted, uh, uh, you know, citizen of Cary. We, you know, as my fellow neighbors expressed concern, I also like to express my concern of, uh, the proposed plan. Since we already have a good, uh, public school system around this area, then why we need a charter school? Usually charter schools are good where the public school system are not really performing well. Here, I mean, since, um, we moved to this area recently because it's a very quiet, uh, you know, and a beautiful neighborhood, we are concerned about this increase to traffic and density. I mean, this is a, a low density residential area before, right? I mean, before the proposal or if the proposal is approved, uh, this, eh, the, you know, the density of the area would be medium to high. And we are concerned about the safety of our kids, uh, running around the neighborhood and, and because of the increased traffic. And also, we are thinking the infrastructure, the road system is very congested already and how can we accommodate another, um, you know, a couple hun- couple thousands of cars and, um, traffic? So, and other, all other stuff, uh, that I have in, in concern is already expressed by my fellow neighbors. So I don't have anything more to say. I, I, I am, I mean, I'm against this proposal as a member of Cary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and Town Council. My name's Daniel Chun and I'm a resident of, uh, Weldon Ridge. I want to add two things about the other people guy said. Regarding to the neighborhood meeting, I didn't receive the notification by myself and I asked all my neighbors and none of them received it. So we will appreciate if there's, uh, another meeting, if there's possible. The second thing is regarding to the rezoning, I want to raise one thing for you to, uh, attention. They changed the entrance from the New Hope Church Road to, uh, the entrance right next to us, to, to, to my neighborhood. And did, because of this change, that's the reason so many people talking about many cars will cut through into our neighborhood. And also, uh, many car will come through the Weldon Ridge Boulevard, which will be just a single lane. And that will cause so many troubles. And because right now, most of our residents use that to go to work. And if that, that kind of traffic will make us unable to go to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else?
Good evening, council members. My name is Ting Yuzung and I'm a resident of Weldon Ridge for about ten years. And, uh, I urge you to just consider the rezoning request here seriously because, uh, I reviewed the original plan. The max number of the housing for the Weldon Ridge, that's six eighty-four. That is upper limit number. And based on the requesting here, so the developer is trying to raise about twenty more. So the total number will be seven oh four. So the six forty eight, six eighty-four, the number was designed about probably ten years ago and that's his upper limit. Right now, the developer just tried to increase the number here. I don't see that's a benefit for the resident here. That is pure for the benefit of the developer. So I hope you guys consider this point seriously. Another point I want to, uh, raise here is, uh, that's, uh, one of my neighbors talked as well. So here's a quote I got from the website, greatschools.org about the Cardinal Academy in Cary. So a parent mentioned about the carpooling in the existing school. They were saying, another horrible experience is carpool. They make it so difficult and you are in the car for literally forty-five minutes. So we are talking about eleven hundred students in Cardinal Academy in Cary right now. The proposed school here is twenty-two hundred, double the size. And my neighbor mentioned, in the Cardinal Academy in Cary, you have four lanes, two ways. Here, we only have one lane. That's a big concern for me. So thanks again for giving me a chance to raise my concern here. I hope you guys can just consider our request sincerely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, mayor, council. My name is Mike Sarasky. I am a representative of the applicant. I'm a traffic engineer. I'm also a professional engineer, state of North Carolina, and a professional traffic operations engineer. I'm gonna make a few points about, about the project itself. Uh, number one, I wanna talk about the queuing. Uh, this school is required to have one point three miles of queuing and that is from an MST A calculator, uh, which is a standard calculator in state of North Carolina done by NCDOT. It is based on actual real data and is updated every year. So it is based on the most current data. As part of this project, as stated earlier by the staff, this will be, there will have to be a traffic management plan. As part of that traffic management plan, that is not only reviewed by, not only approved by the town, but will also need to be approved by NCDOT. We will make sure that there is separated lanes in and into the site, which means coming from both directions. There will be a free flow right lane in and there will be a dedicated left turn lane in, so that they will be able to enter at the same time. This is a standard that NCDOT is using on all of its schools right now. I also wanna mention that there will be two points of access from the periphery. There will be a point of access from Yates Store, uh, through Sentinel Ferry. There will also be access from New Hope Church Road because there is, Sentinel Ferry will be extended to that roadway. There will also be dual ways out of the school. There will be a way out of the school on Yates Store, it'll be only an out. And there will be a way to get out to Yates Store and to, from Sentinel Ferry. Do wanna mention that the point of this is that when you plan for a school and the traffic getting in and out of the school, you don't want the streams of traffic in and out to overlap. The only place they would overlap here would be at a new proposed signal to be built by the developer at the intersection of Yates Store and Sentinel Ferry. Pedestrian connectivity is extremely important to this project. Uh, we will take every opportunity we can to go ahead and do pedestrian connectivity uh, and make sure that there is safe conditions crossing Yates Store Road. Uh, one of the, one of the things that we find great about this plan is that the original approval in two thousand four had the school back away from the thoroughfare, which is Yates Store Road in this case. And now we are moving the school up to the thoroughfare. That's what you do with major traffic generators like a school, you move them up to a thoroughfare so that they don't go through other neighborhoods. I also wanna mention that the analysis was conservative, but there was a lot of talk about a, a long queue, uh, something that's longer than the, uh, minimum seventy-two hundred that's required. That is for a total two thousand two hundred students. This is a staggered school. So when we look at the stacking, we're looking at it from, as part of the stagger. And then the analysis is actually conservative. We're not looking at it fifty-fifty. The analysis was actually done where you split the school in half, but you also add twenty-five percent from the other grades to make it a little more conservative. We're always trying to find, trying to find ways to make it more conservative. On that as well, this does not take into account any drop-offs before, after, before school. It does not take in count any pickups after school. So this is strictly just people dropping the kids off in the morning when school starts, people picking the kids up in the afternoon when school ends. It also doesn't take into account traffic from additional, from, from neighborhoods nearby. A lot of the, all the traffic that's going in and out of school is from the out, basically the outside of the area. When you look at the TAR that was done, it's traffic that's coming into those thirteen intersections from somewhere else. It does not take into account all the people that actually live in that area that might go to that school. Uh, do you wanna mention that any site plans that we will submit will adhere to town of Cary standards? So the queuing standards, anything else on site, uh, the, the, the flow, the parking especially, will have to meet town of Cary standards. So if there's, if there's questions about parking, we have to meet those standards. Um, with this school, this school is not being built today. The school will be built within a couple of years possibly. The conditions that are out there right now are gonna be different in two years. When Yates Store Road is completed to feral, there's gonna be a whole new way to get in and out of this area. With the Morrisville Parkway addition, there's gonna be a whole new way, way to get in and out of this area. We heard earlier that the fund, that there was funding approved for this new signal at Yates Store and Carpenter Fire Station. DOT Board also approved the extent, the, the missing piece in Morrisville Parkway. So there will be more ways to in and out of West Cary and in and out of this area. And I will be here for any questions if you have any. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, members of council, my name is Julie Gavigan and I represent the applicant and the developer. I wanted to just take a few minutes to summarize what you've heard tonight. Um, and I wanna reiterate a few things that like, that Katie started and Glenda mentioned. as well. This rezoning request is not modifying any uses. The uses exist today. We merely felt that it was a good thing to do to move the school up towards the road. We felt that that was the right thing for the school and for the citizens of Cary. We have also preserved, we, when one of the speakers mentioned their concerns for the American Tobacco Trail. We as well agree that is a tremendous asset. My kids and I are on that trail every other weekend. Feel very strongly we should protect it. We have agreed to do the seventy-five additional area of buffer from the trail. And we, by also moving the school up towards Yates, have come further from that area. We also will be leaving and protecting the green space that you will see on the screen. That's over seven acres of wetlands and green space that will remain undisturbed and unchanged. Will also provide what we believe to be a natural barrier from existing neighbors to our south. The intent of what we are doing, as Glenda mentioned, is to promote Policy Nine. This policy encourage efforts to grow and strengthen the quality, capacity, and accessibility of the local educational offerings. We feel very strongly, and we have done tremendous market research, that substantiates that there is a tremendous need for additional schools in this area. I realize that, yes, there are six schools that have been built within, I'll say, two miles of this site. Of those, four of them are currently capped. They are Mills Park Elementary, Mills Park Middle, Carpenter, as well as Panther Creek High School. There are really not a lot of options for people moving in here for a public school. This would provide an option for folks in this area as well as in Chatham County. We feel very good and strong about that, and we've done a lot of research to back that Again, just want to reiterate, the school zoning is already currently in place. We are just trying to do our best to move it towards the front of Yates Store, where we feel it meets the needs of the citizens and is in the best interest of the town. And that is what is required and necessitated us being here tonight. Thank you all very much for all your time. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else speak at this public hearing?
Anyone who all, going to close the public hearing, want to, first of all, thank all of our speakers and our audience for their comments and for understanding that this is a business meeting, that's very much appreciated. The, these speakers, I could real, I've realized that some of them were here for the first time, and so there's a whole list of things I would like to go over. I'll try to be brief, that are misunderstandings that I want to make sure everybody's clear on. First of all, I heard more than once reconsider our proposal. Please understand, this is not a Town of Cary proposal. We don't endorse it. We don't do anything. We have to review what is proposed to us. The applicant, the landowner, they can propose to us, and we have to review it. And that's exactly the process. I heard one, one resident say that they're critical of the new law, and what's the benefit to the taxpayer? Amen. Please go talk to your legislators. Please. I totally agree with you on that. Signal installation, please understand, that's an NC DOT decision. The Town of Cary measures the criteria, presents that information to NC DOT, and they decide whether or not to do it based on the criteria. Also heard that we should pause the rezoning. Don't think we have authority to do that. You can't pause a rezoning. The applicant has the right to make a request, and we have to evaluate that request. The council is very limited on what we can request of schools. As the last speaker representing the applicant mentioned, it is already approved for schools. So, if we deny this, they can still build a school. We can't control that. And when we are also, someone said, "Can we go back and undo what was approved in 2004?" The answer is no. What's approved, they have the right to do, and we can't change that. And if they want to build a school there today, they can build a school there today. I heard that the process is rushed. Please understand, what's happened so far is the developers are required to have a neighborhood meeting that has taken place. Somebody said they didn't get the notice. And then they have a public hearing, and then it goes to an advisory board made up of appointed citizens who will review everything in detail and discuss it. And then they will make a recommendation, and it will come back to council. This whole process takes several months. So, it's a couple of months at least before we make any decision at all. Heard ones say stop development, not only on this case, but every case. We have no authority to stop any development. Can't consider who goes to school. I heard that. Can't consider if it's a charter school or not. That's not in our authority. Another meeting with the developer, maybe. I think that's a good idea. There's a lot of concerns, and I would strongly recommend that the developer meet with the residents once again, because there's some misunderstandings, some disagreements, and I think there's some room for negotiation and improvement. I heard the representative for the applicant say that they're going to have a staggered school. Unless that's a condition, we can't consider it. Is it a condition?
Yes, it is.
It is a condition. Okay, so we can consider that. So, that is very important for the residents to understand that, and maybe that would come out in a meeting. Those are the list of things I captured. I'm sure that my colleagues have captured others who, Jennifer, it's your district. Why don't you start?
I'll start. That was an excellent list of the things that we can't control. So, and I was thinking about that, you know, as, as the speakers are talking with us, there's certain things that we just don't have authority over, and we wish we did. But there are some things that we will need to be considering. The first is, is this adequate acreage for the school and for all the programming that the school needs? The second question is, is this school site actually providing adequate queuing on-site? And how much spillage can we really expect on Weldon Ridge? And the third thing is, is there actually adequate parking on the site? So, those are, those are some very essential elements that we need to consider for the quality of life of the entire community. And I feel like I have a little bit of insight, because I just spent about sixteen years sending kids to Cary Christian School. And so, I just quickly looked up the site for that school, which is 20.64 acres. So, you know, two and a half acres bigger than this school site. That school has approximately 858 students if it's at full capacity, which I don't think it's been at full capacity for a while. So, and I'm not sure how many employees, but just kind of ballparking it, I think there's probably about seventy employees. So, I think what we need to do is, we need to have our staff go and critically assess the K through twelve private schools in our area. They need to look at the adequate, the size of them, the attendance, the number of employees, how many parking spots do they have, how much spillage do they have? I can tell you Cary Christian School has spillage every single morning and some afternoons. And it's very, very frustrating for the community around that school to have that spillage. It's one thing when you have a school that kind of got started twenty-some years ago, and it's, you know, is before Cary got so crowded, but we should know better at this point. And we should, we should be looking at these matters critically. When a school in this day and age gets built, it needs to be built so it has no spillage coming off of the site. It's just, I think, irresponsible for us to even allow it, no, no flooding. But these are the things that we need to be critically assessing. And I am, I am fairly concerned about the ability of this seventeen-acre parcel to be able to handle 2,200 students and be able to provide enough programming on-site and enough parking for its juniors and seniors and staff, and then the queuing. So, these are things that we need to look at, and we, we need to have those answers. I need to understand exactly how many linear feet of queuing Cary Christian School has and the other K through twelve schools have, what percentage capacity they're running at. I mean, I just need to see the numbers on this one to be able to understand if this school, if what we're hearing is going to be sufficient. And I understand that NC DOT has a standard that is 1.3 miles of queuing, but I have to think, they're not just considering Cary. They're considering Greensboro and Washington County. I mean, they're, they're considering a lot of things when they pick that number. It's not just Cary. So, we have to assess if that is actually an appropriate number for us, and we do have authority to decide that for our site.
Other comments?
I think, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I think, I think your point about the, the adequate size is, is the part where we can look into and have a part. I mean, the irony of listening to this is, if there's anything we've always needed is schools, and if there's anything we need, is we need charter schools, you know, that pay attention to the kids. So, I think, I think we have to look at the things that we can control and we can manage. I think those, those points you made about spillover, spill, you know, those are the kind of things, it, it was a little shocking to me, see seventeen acres for that size. So, I think those are the things that, you know, I'll be looking at it in a very critical way to see that we can do. But a lot of the things, as you mentioned, Mayor, that were brought up are not relevant to the case. There, there are issues outside of our control.
Yeah, they're relevant, but they're outside of our control.
Right. Thank you. Thank you for making me sound smarter than I was, so.
Ms. France.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson, for those comments, and thank you, Mayor, for your clarification. I, I agree with Ms. Robinson. I too have concerns whether the site is actually large enough to handle the uses proposed. And I just question, this is a question for the applicant at a later time, that what's more important, an extra fifty-six residential units or providing an adequate school for the community? You know, to, to enlarge the residential component at the expense of the school component, I just, there's just something that doesn't quite feel right about it. As you said, a school has already been approved here. They could build a school tomorrow with the existing PDD. So, a lot of the concerns that were raised regarding the school, quite frankly, I have deaf ears to that. This is, I've been on this council for ten years, and this is the first council meeting ever that somebody has showed up, or multiple people have showed up and said, "We have enough schools." That, that has never happened before.
That's never happened, yeah.
Never. And when you look at the facts and the number of schools that are overcapacity or capped out in this area, it's false.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's false. So, I get the concerns regarding parking and some traffic in the neighboring streets, you know. I, I live behind Cary High School, okay? I live across the street from Franklin Field, Mills Field, Cary Swim Club, the church, and Cary High School. So, I, I get the parking on the street concern. So, I, I would love to better understand how they intend to park the site, handle the, the queuing, the, the carpool line, and those kinds of things. If they can demonstrate that they can do that, to me, I, I don't know that I see a reason to oppose it. But it just, it just feels like they're almost, find the residential component more important than the school component to expand that so much. And that just doesn't quite sit right with me.
Other comments?
Well, just as we don't want our speakers to become repetitive, I don't want to be repetitive.
I appreciate it.
I, I agree with everything that, that's been said. So, just simply, it, due to the si- potential size of this school, and the location, and the conditions that are offered, or maybe better said, the conditions that are not offered, only five of the eleven recommended can, traffic conditions. In my opinion, a potential traffic nightmare exists. And I would just need to be convinced by the time this gets back to us that that nightmare isn't going to be a reality. Maybe the traffic management plan, which has been spoken about, will help do that. I'm interested to see what that is and, and learn more about that. But right now, one speaker mentioned the protecting existing neighborhoods, and that's always a big part of the Cary community plan to me. And I, I don't see that necessarily happening with the plan that's right in front of us today.
To make a different comment, I agree also with what's been said, but why a charter school, supposed to a public school? Clearly, I believe, we're in Chatham County with this property, and I don't think Chatham County is going to build a school to serve those few people on that side of the lake, but squeezed in that area. So, the best way to serve them is a charter school, and we have no control over who the charter, who runs the charter school. So, to me, it just, it, whether they came with a charter, or if Chatham County came to us and said, "We want to build a school here," I don't think we can consider the applicant. We have to consider these other things. But I understand why a charter school would make sense in this area to be able to draw from Wake, Chatham, and Durham County, because I don't think Chatham's going to build a school there.
Any other comments?
The only thing that hasn't already been said is I, I would like to say that I like the idea of moving the school closer to the thoroughfare. I mean, I'm glad that that was done and that the MDR was put closer to the American Tobacco Trail. I mean, every, I always try to find some sort of silver lining, right? That is one thing that I like about it. But I still have significant number of concerns about the traffic study. I have concerns about the tar not seeming to match what the traffic engineer just came up and said. I mean, I did see the 11,000-feet queuing recommendation, and then I did see the, you know, fifty, you know, 1.2 miles of queuing, which seems like it would be enough, but why did the tar say something different? Right? I'd like to know the differences between the parking, everything, where we had considerations from a lot of the members of the public who came and pointed out these things. I think they need to be addressed before they come back to us.
Very good.
I'd just like to give one. Can I give a little history on the site for the people who haven't lived here the whole time? In 2004, when this proposal came to us, the applicant had proposed this school site slash church site, it was going to be a combo site. And they asked for extra density on the remainder of Weldon Ridge subdivision. And we gave them that extra density in anticipation of getting a school out here, because we really have had a need for a school out here.
There was massive reassignments in 2004.
Right, yeah. So, since then, we've had a lot of development pressure on this site. A lot of applicants come in and, and want to change the school site into a residential, completely residential site. And we have, I hate this expression, but we have jealously guarded it and, and said, "No, you, all you can do is put in a combination of houses and some public benefit, and that could be a church, a school, a community center, an aquatic center, or something like that. But it has to be some public need that's addressed." And for us, it was a relief to finally get a proposal for a school in. The question is, can this site support a school the way that the land has been re-divided? And that, I don't know the answer to at this point.
Any other comments? Very good. I, I will just add to what Ms. France said about his experience. There's over eighty years' experience on this council. And the reason I tell you that is, we will leave no stone unturned. And the representative or the applicant knows us very well, and she knows that everything we said, we mean, and, and she's going to work on that. And I would recommend that you have a community meeting, and, and she's nodding her head, yes. And so, I think that's the best route for the applicant to go. The process right now is, this now goes to the Planning and Zoning Board, as I've mentioned previously. They will probably see it in January, February?
Yeah, either January or February.
January or February. And that means we'll probably see it in March timeframe or something like that at the earliest. So, that's what you can count on. Ms. Dry is your staff contact point for questions. There was a lot of misunderstanding today. If you have questions, please contact Ms. Dry. She'll be glad to get you the answers. And if you forget her name, just email the council or email me, and I'll make sure she gets that email and she answers you. We're here to serve you, and we want to make sure that you understand the process and understand everything that's going on, and that you're totally up to date at all times of what's going on in this process. And I realize, again, that this is the first time a lot of you have been here, and I thank you very much for coming to this council meeting, and I hope that you will come back in the future. Okay, having said it...
Could I add one thing about?
Sure.
For the education part, is if, if significant changes do, or conditions get added, or changes are made, there will be another public hearing at the P and Z Board, so they'll have a chance to speak out again at that time.
And you can always speak at this council meeting, at any council meeting. You either speak at Public Speaks Out or public hearing. That is true from now forever. You can always come to a council meeting and speak. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dry. And before we move to our next rezoning sta- uh, council's going to take a very brief break.
You were trying to figure that out, too? Because I was thinking, "Thank you."
Yeah, well, the next one's going to go.
Yeah. Yeah.
...six-two acre piece of property off of Wilson Road. The conditions limited to single-family or detached residential, minimum 7,000 square foot lots. I do want to point out one thing. At the neighborhood meeting, there was really one person who attended, but that person brought somebody with them. And one of the questions they had was comparing this development to what was adjacent to it that is already zoned TR conditional use. And what was pointed out that the, and I actually did that case and went back and checked it, and it had no minimum lot size requirement. It was just straight TR conditional use with detached residential. This has a minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet, so these lots are basically larger than what you have next to it, but it is complementary to what's being done in that area from a rezoning standpoint. Staff listed the policies that we believe we meet. And with that, I will close, and if you have any questions, I will answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Top. Now's time for a public hearing, 17 REZ 28 Wilson Road rezoning, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments. There are none. This will go to the Planning and Zoning Board, and we wish Glenda Top a happy birthday, and we'll see you at a future date.
It's my pleasure to always be here. I was telling somebody.
Hold on, nasty stuff.
See, you started her.
I thought you were going to be short.
But I started here in '79 and I was doing this, so I still love it.
We now move to our third item of the public hearings. 17 ACT 03 Land Development Ordinance Amendments. Development Liaison, Cassie Schumacher, George, ooh, Georgeopolis, I butchered that. You're going to have to help me with that. We'll introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning tonight, but it will be referred to Planning and Zoning Board at a later date. Cassie, please help me pronounce your last name.
Thank you. It's Cassie Schumacher Georgeopolis.
Geordopolis?
Georgeopolis, like City of George.
Georgeopolis.
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 Schumacher, Georgeopolis.
Schumacher.
We can be friends or family.
Schumacher. Might be from the same town.
You say Schumacher or Schumacher?
I said Schum- we say Schumacher. You can, my brother says Schumacher.
She's right. All right. Cassie Schumacher Georgeopolis.
Oh, yay, you did it.
All you have to do is say Cassie, like, share from here on out.
Well, welcome. This is the first time you've been before, so welcome.
It is. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you and to alleviate some of the burden that Mary's had over many years here.
Oh, my goodness. So, we like you already.
So, we'll be really serious now. All right. So, this is the public hearing for Act Three for Land Development Ordinance, or LDO, amendments. The Land Development Ordinance is an important tool for the establishment of development regulations and for implementing the Cary Community Plan. Development-related regulations are primarily contained in the Land Development Ordinance and are critical for implementing the initiative for many plans. In addition to the LDO, there are other regulations, policies, and guidelines that contribute to the creation of the built environment. Proposed amendments to all the documents are now brought forward as act items as related to the act chapter of the Cary Community Plan. We will continue to bring forward more act items as Cary moves from development regulations of today to what is needed to achieve the vision of the Cary Community Plan. Tonight, there are two LDO amendments being presented for public hearing. Item A sets requirements for the Carpenter Historic Character Preservation Streetscape and Item B, which includes three technical and minor amendments. As I mentioned, our first item tonight is a proposal to establish requirements for Carpenter Historic Character Preservation Streetscape. You can say that three times fast and we'll give you an award. Earlier this year, the town signed a memorandum of agreement, or an MOA, with the State Historic Preservation Office and the Army Corps of Engineers as part of the Carpenter Fire Station, Road Realignment, and Grade Separation Project. In the MOA, the town agreed to consider requiring uniform 50-foot wide streetscapes for new development along some roads in the project area to minimize the impact of, on the Carpenter Historic District. This LDO amendment proposes streetscape widths and planting requirements along the portions of Morrisville Carpenter Road, Good Hope Church Road, Lewis Stevens Drive, and Saunders Grove Lane that are depicted here. Currently, a 30-to-50-foot streetscape is required of new developments along Morrisville Carpenter and Lewis Stevenson's Road. A 30-foot streetscape is required for all new development along New Hope Church Road, and a 15-foot wide streetscape is required for non-residential developments along Saunders Grove. The proposed amendment would require a 50-foot streetscape for all new development occurring along the subject road sections. The proposed amendment also includes special planting requirements designed to create a view of naturally occurring tree lines with evergreens to screen new development. The planting requirements would allow for breaks in the streetscape to allow for historic structures to remain visible along the roadway. This slide shows an example of a situation where a break would be allowed along Morrisville Carpenter Road, so you could still see the historic structure and through, through the The Carpenter Fire Station Realignment Project will tie Morrisville Carpenter Road into Carpenter Fire Station Road and tie Good Hope Church Road into Saunders Grove Lane, significantly improving mobility and safety in the area. All these road sections are reali, are reali, excuse me, all of these road sections realign the roads, that are realigning the roads may need to be renamed, and if that's the case, staff will return to council at a later date to update the ordinance and the streetscape requirements for the realigned or renamed road sections. And finally, this proposed amendment not only meets the memorandum of agreement, but also is in keeping with the policy from the Cary Community Plan for the Historic Carpenter Special Planning Area, which is to reinforce and complement the historic character of Carpenter when realigning Morrisville Carpenter Road in the future. And this concludes the Item A presentation. And then finally tonight, moving on to Item B, there are three technical and minor amendments. The first amendment is to amend the ordinance to require master sign plans include at least one unifying design element for ground signs and alleviate the requirement for uniformity of multiple features. In cases where there are no master sign plans, ground signs will be required to match or be architecturally compatible with the principal building. The second amendment is to authorize the Transportation and Facilities Director and the Water Resources Director to accept partial or zero payment in lieu of required improvements on town-owned property. This amendment will remove any burden or conflict of interest on town council to authorize and accept the payment. And finally, the third amendment is simply to replace the term "structure" with "building" in order to clarify the section of Table 6.1-3 in reference to the minimum building height. And this concludes staff's presentation, and we are available to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Schumacher Georgeopolis. All right. We now open the public hearing for 17 ACT 03 Land Development Ordinance Amendments, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Hello, my name's Richard Banks. I'm a representative of Good Hope Baptist Church, which is on Good Hope, Good Hope Church Road. I will only be speaking on Item A, as far as the lands, as far as the streetscape. And this is in reference to what is already happening with the development and our capital improvement project within our church and our property, the intersection of Morrisville Carpenter and Good Hope Church Road. With the Carpenter Fire Station realignment, we are one of the properties that are being affected by that. And so, some of our easements and buffers and property lines are having to be given up due to that realignment. We are already, due to our building program now, required, we are already doing sidewalks, the buffering and everything else with that along Morrisville, along Morrisville Carpenter and Good Hope Church Road. With this, where we're going from basically 30-feet buffer to 50-foot, this will greatly impact some of our future projects as far as new sanctuary, some of the new things we're trying to do along the Good Hope Church Road. So, an extra 20 to 30 feet, we'll cut into some of that. We just asked, we like the project and how it's going, we like the historical aspect of the historic, of the Carpenter community, but we would like to, at least, at least at the intersection with Morrisville Carpenter and Good Hope Church Road, can we keep the buffer at least where it is currently, for our property at least, because we seem to be one of the bigger, the more impacted properties along this project? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll open it up to council members for questions or comments.
I'm just curious about where the number 50 came from for the recommendation. I know it, it was all over the place, but is there some background about why it should be 50, not 30? Because we have 30 other places.
I'm going to answer that question. Apologize.
Good evening. In the memorandum of agreement that we signed this past May as a part of the Carpenter Fire Station Road Realignment Project, and we signed this memorandum of agreement with the State Historic Preservation Office, we agreed to bring to you for consideration a uniform 50-foot width along those subject pieces of the roads, and that's where it came from.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Is there any flexibility built into this to address the church's concern? I mean, is there a process that they could go to, to request?
Waiver.
Cutting into the buffer a little bit, or is it firm?
Or is it a QJ?
Well, yeah, process.
Yeah. Well, there is some flexibility built in in that if the building, if there is a building that is on the, on Cary's historic inventory, then the, there can be a break in the buffer so that you can see the building. And the church sanctuary itself and the cemetery are listed on the inventory. Now, I think, and so, there could be a break there that may or may not help, you know, if they needed greater relief. I think there is a QJ process. And it's not, it depends on where the building, a new building would be, whether they needed to increase their buffer, and that's about as far as I know. And if, if you have more questions about that, we have some people here who could, who could tell you some more in detail.
I think if you could just give me that info, or get us that information, you know, later on, follow up with us on it, but I just, you know, the church sanctuary and the cemetery, obviously, you know, wouldn't have to comply, but any new construction.
Right.
Might. So, just let us know if there's a process where they could request some flexibility or relief.
Okay.
And Mr. Banks, this is Anna Relling, and she's somebody you could talk to and get some information about what's likely and what's not likely to happen, and I would recommend that you talk to her or someone in her.
Be glad to talk to you.
Department. Okay, very good. Thank you, Ms. Relling.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So, like the previous rezoning cases, this will go to the, or will it not? Yes, this will go to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and we'll see it in future months. Thank you, Ms. Schumacher Georgeopolis.
Thank you very much as well. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay, our last public hearing is the Samaritan House Foundation DBA Seastone Tefra Hearing. We'll welcome back Ms. Mills to the podium to present this item, and action is required from the council following this hearing.
Hello, council. Tonight, we're here to support a senior housing facility in Cary through a process required by the IRS in the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act. Seastone Retirement Community is an independent living and nursing facility in Cary financed by the Public Finance Agency, a political subdivision of the state of Wisconsin, and they're authorized to issue tax-exempt bonds for public benefit projects nationwide. The Public Finance Agency is proposing to issue up to $80 million in bonds which would finance both improvements and refinance existing debt of Seastone Retirement Community, and like, we were on a tight schedule, they're on a tight schedule for that refinance. This debt process requires an elected local governing body to approve the financing following a public hearing process. This is not town of Cary debt, and like in the past Tefra hearing, Samaritan Housing Foundation has provided an indemnification agreement that is attached to the staff report. And by conducting this hearing and taking this action, the town indirectly supports the fiscal success of a housing option for seniors in Cary. So, after the public hearing, I'll comment on the key points of the proposed resolution for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Mills.
This time.
Now's the time for public hearing, 5.4 Samaritan Housing Foundation DBA Seastone Tefra Hearing, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Robert Wambel of KNL Gates in Riley. We're counsel to Samaritan Housing Foundation, which is the owner of the Seastone Retirement Community. Phase one of Seastone was financed through the issuance of, in 2012, of $117 million of bonds issued by the Public Finance Authority. Fast forward to today, the community is 100% occupied, and we have a substantial waiting list. Because of the success of the community, that debt has been paid down, so now the balance on that debt is about $56 million. That debt bears an interest rate, though, of eight and a half, 8.625% per annum. When the bonds were issued, we were coming out of the recession, and Seastone being a startup facility, that was the interest rate those bonds attracted. Now, because the community is a successful community, and we've come out of the recession, we have the opportunity to refinance the bonds at a dramatically lower rate. I need to tell you a little bit about the refinancing, and at the end of my presentation, you'll understand why I need to tell you this. The 2012 bonds cannot be prepaid, so what we have to do is issue new bonds, take the proceeds from the new bonds, and use that to buy government securities, and then place those government securities in an escrow account with a bank, and then that bank uses their earnings on those government securities to pay the bonds, the interest on the bonds each month. And, and so, that's the way it's done. You know, bond people like to use different terminology. We would call it a refinancing, but they call it, call refinancing as refundings. Well, this sort of refunding here, where you have the escrow, is called an advance refunding because we're selling bonds today, but the existing bonds really won't be paid off until they mature. So, that's an advance refunding, and that'll be important later. Anyway, because of the interest rate differentials with this financing, and as Ms. Mills said, the rates are fluctuating, we hope to price the bonds within the next day or two, but because of those rates, we feel like we can save between 1.1 million and 1.5 million dollars a year for the years 2018 through 2024. The years 2024 to 2046, the savings will be about $235,000 a year. And so, what we're going to do with that savings is to borrow about 5.5 million additional dollars and use that as seed money to start Phase Two of Seastone. We bought the land for that about a year ago, and use that as seed money. If for some reason Phase Two does not proceed, we can use that money for any capital improvement. We would probably use it to fund a memory care facility in the health facility for Seastone. All that being said, we started on this refinancing about the first of September, and in mid-October, we were surprised when both the House and the Senate versions of the Tax Reform Act that's going through said that interest on bonds issued in these advanced refundings, if they're issued after this December 31st, that interest is not tax exempt. So, so if we don't get these bonds issued before December 31st, we're going to lose the expected $7.9 million in savings that we will achieve if we're able to get this done between now and the end of the year. I've got up here a number of residents of Samaritan or Seastone who are here in support of that, including the president of the Residents Association, members of the Board of Directors, as well as the president of Samaritan, should you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers for this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Do I hear questions or comments from council, if not a motion?
So, make a motion that we move forward and approve the resolution for the tax-exempt bonds for the financing of the Seastone Retirement Community. Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
The only thing I want to say about this is, I think it's very bizarre that a local authority that has no, nothing to do with Seastone, it's not-for-profit, has to do this resolution where we have no risk, we have no indemnification, and, you know, it's just a piece of paper that we sign that says, "Go forth." It just seems very bizarre to me. Is it a state law? Is it a federal law? Why do we have to do this?
I believe it's a part of the IRS regulations that allow them to conduct this.
Federal.
To have tax-exempt bonds.
Okay.
Some bureaucrat thought it was a good idea.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Mills.
Thank you.
We now move to discussion items. Our first discussion item is the lease on the Sam's Jones House. Downtown manager Ted Boyd will present this item, and council may take action. Mr. Boyd.
Good evening, council. I'm pleased to bring before you, for your consideration, the much anticipated lease for the Sam's Jones House at 324 South Academy Street. I want to highlight three things that are in your staff report, and then talk a little bit about next steps. But to begin with, I just want to talk a little bit about downtown and the Sam's Jones House as well. You'll see the star indicating the location, and really, what is, and this is just a small depiction of some of the many things that are happening, have recently happened, and are taking place as part of our downtown revitalization. This is located within our downtown business improvement district, and some of the initial things that we began is taking surplus property that the town had and putting more active uses through leasing. And it's not so much about just finding someone to, to lease the space, but the right fit that can transform and animate space. Brew and the Cary Theater was one of those, and then Pharmacy next door to that, bringing life to our sidewalks, to our streets. And then I think one of the exciting things for me personally, in the role that I get to play, is when a business owner like this can be successful and then want to create a second business, which opened this week post-master full-service restaurant, right in downtown, right across the street. And that really kind of brings us to the Sam's Jones House. The town purchased this, I believe in 2011, with the purpose to put a restaurant in that, converted to that. We're given the opportunity to re-lease this space, and we went through a RFP process, had several folks that inquired, five. And just to talk a little bit, one of the, two of the things, and you've heard me mention this before in presentations that came up, is when you look at this picture off just to the left, you can see that the restroom doors are trying to be hidden there, and the proximity of tables next to restroom doors are not always a great thing. So, that came up, and then also the ability to have a walk-in cooler to be able to keep and prepare the foods within that. So, seeing that those two items really came up from all of the five top folks that we were looking at, we went ahead and began exploring the options. This is to give you a little bit, I'll zoom in just so you can see the ability to reorient the restrooms off of the back to add a walk-in, and then looking from the rear perspective, it would, you know, kind of come out from where the handicap ramp is, we would add a lift within that. And so, we've, we already started working through that. It would be using already-approved downtown funds to be able to look at that, but, and I'll talk a little bit more about the next steps associated, but just some of the things that came up as we went through. But we did find what we believe is an excellent choice, Chef Michael Chung, who is no stranger to Cary or the Triangle area. He was the executive chef at Prestonwood Country Club, started ON, ran that for six years before he left to go start Elements in Chapel Hill. The thing that is really impressive, I attached his bio, I hope you had the opportunity to read it. Not many people have the opportunity for their story to read. At the age of 15, your parents put together seven ounces of gold in order to put a seat on a boat, in order to help you escape communist Vietnam. Through a refugee camp, he landed in Louisiana, in New Orleans, and went to college, LSU, and wanted to follow his dream of architecture. And through some part-time work, working in the restaurants, he really found the true calling in his love. And through the excess that he has had with that, I think that was an appeal to this particular house, to this particular structure, the ability to marry a love from the past with a love at the present. And, and so, we're very pleased. One of the things that you do get is the entire family working with this, from his children to his sons-in-law, to his wife. So, it is a family event and a, and a whole process. So, this would be a new concept, it would not be an Elements Point Two or an ON Point Two, but it would be the ability to marry all of that talent and skill and ability within the appropriate setting and size within that. They would also, just to be clear, they do, will keep Elements, so they're not closing that in order to pursue this. A couple of Elements, sorry, didn't mean to say Elements again, but, a couple of notes of the technical components of the lease, it is a 10-year term for years one through five. It would be $55,200 annually. In years six through 10, that increases to $60,700 annually, so just under $580,000 to the town for the full 10-year duration of the lease. Some of the next steps, we want to go through final design approvals and permits. One of those, as you know, we've recently landmarked Sam's Jones House, and we'll go through the process of a certificate of appropriateness for any of the external changes to the back of that. We actually had a meeting today to discuss that process further and to bring that to the HBC and a quasi-judicial hearing for that. If approved, we would get through that, execute the lease, and then we would work on the construction of those changes and those improvements, and try to go as quickly as possible so that they could be opened as quickly as possible. That, the recommendation of the staff is to approve the resolution as indicated on the screen, and with that, I'm happy to help answer any questions you might have.
Questions, comments, motion?
Make a motion that council adopt the attached resolution approving 324th South Academy Street lease and authorizing the town manager and/or deputy town manager to execute a lease substantially like the lease, and to provide such notices and take such actions as lease contemplates.
Second. There's a motion and a second discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to Mr. Boyd's comments. A number of us had an opportunity to go to Elements and meet Mr. Chung and kind of hear a little bit about him and experience some of his fine cooking as well. Yeah, it's good. If you haven't been, go.
I've been to ON and Prestonwood.
ON was amazing. So, obviously, you know what Mr. Chung and his, and his family can do, but hearing his story, how he came from nothing and made something of himself, and has been a successful restaurateur in every place he's been, it's just been fantastic, and I think he will be very successful here in downtown, so I'm very excited about it.
Good. Other, oh, we had a motion, right? Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Help him get that open as soon as possible.
Well, thank you.
All right, we move to our second discussion item, fiscal year 2018 sidewalk priority list. Engineer Lana Deans will present the information on this item, and we may take action.
Yes. Good evening, council. Tonight, I'm presenting the priority list developed by the Sidewalk Request Program. The sidewalk program is just one of the reasons why Cary is nationally recognized as a walk-friendly community. Sidewalks serve everyone, people walking in their neighborhood, going to dinner downtown, kids riding their bikes, or someone walking to the bus stop. In the past, sidewalk projects tended to be shorter in length, filling in those missing gaps in town. Over time, projects requested have become longer segments, though, which are often more complicated, challenging, and more costly to complicated, challenging, and more costly to construct. And it's not just sidewalks anymore that we're looking at, we're looking at crosswalks, intersection improvements, ADA improvements, which is complying with the American Disabilities Act. And we want to give pedestrians a safe place to walk alongside the road, but we also want to give them a safe place to cross the road too. Sidewalks can reduce up to 88% of pedestrian crashes alongside the roadway. We've seen sidewalks increase pedestrian activity because you won't walk to school or the neighborhood store if you don't feel safe. This program also promotes the move policies in the Imagine Cary Plan. There are three sidewalks, three sidewalk projects proposed tonight along Tryon Road, Ederly Drive, and Northwest Maynard Road. Based on town sidewalk policy, staff ranked 31 proposed sidewalk projects, and so these are the top three. The Tryon Road project will complete the sidewalk on the north side of the road, serving pedestrians who walk to Wake County Cary, local restaurants, retail, and hotels. The project cost is $227,500. Right-of-way is available. Tryon Road is quite busy, the speed limit's 45 miles an hour. It's one of those roads that could be a barrier to pedestrians walking along Tryon Road. So at the Tryon Road Crescent Green intersection, we're proposing pedestrian facility improvements. So we're going to be adding a crosswalk there, count down pedestrian signals. Currently, the closest crosswalk is at the Kildare Farm Road, which is further east. And you can see not everyone actually walks to that intersection, this bike list was observed, just kind of crossing the road, riding his bike down the median, and then waiting for a gap before he could cross down to the south side of Tryon Road. The second project is on Ederly Drive from Regency Parkway to Penny Road. You may recall hearing about this project at council's first quarter meeting, which was on November 17th, where you approved staff's request for an additional $70,000 to convert this project to a street-side trail. This proposed trail provides a pedestrian connection adjacent to the Penny Road Elementary School for children walking to school. The trail then continues further north and connects to residential neighborhoods, Coca Booth, Symphony Lake, and Swift Creek Greenway. This project cost is $609,500. There is right-of-way available. There's quite an active walking community going to Penny Road Elementary School. Staff received 16 requests from families and also from the principal at Penny Road Elementary. Staff performed a pedestrian study along Ederly Drive, basically we just counted the kids walking to school. And it warrants a rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the crosswalks to alert drivers when pedestrians are crossing. This crosswalk will be located at the Ederly Drive and Whitcomb Lane intersection. And so that picture down at the bottom you'll see is a similar crosswalk that we're proposing, that one's on Maynard Road. Northwest, the third project is actually on Northwest Maynard Road from Old Apex to Castalia. And this fills in an existing sidewalk gap. And you can see it kind of shown in the blue line on the map. Now, there's a second line on the map, it's the town's Maynard Road Waterline Project, which is in the exact same area, you'll notice. It actually extends a little further north though to High House Road. Obviously, no one wants to live through two construction projects, so we're going to coordinate design, easement acquisition, and construction for both projects to save costs and obviously limit disruption to residents, consistent with the Wake Cary Initiative. The Northwest Manor Road Project is $769,000. So after the first two projects that you saw, on Ederly and Tryon, there's only $282,000 remaining in the balance for the program. This is enough money, however, to initiate design and to acquire the easements that we need for the sidewalk project. So approving the $282,000 now lets us stay on schedule with the Waterline Project so that when we're reaching out to residents for easements, we're only contacting them once for easements for the sidewalk and the Waterline Project simultaneously. The remaining funds, the $487,000 needed for construction, will be brought back to council in the next fiscal year as part of this program. And coordinating both projects ultimately will save the town money and limit construction impact to the residents. So staff recommends council approve funding for the Tryon Road and Ederly Drive projects and approve funding for the design and easement acquisition for the Northwest Maynard Road Project. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Ms. Deans, I have a question that I always ask about sidewalk projects. Are we losing ground? Are we keeping up? Are we gaining ground on the requests for sidewalks?
We saw an increase this year in the number of sidewalk requests, so we evaluated 31 projects this year. I believe last year it was more like 23. And that, so in the past, it's been right around kind of the low 20s, so we did see a little jump.
So we're falling behind. Yeah, okay. In my individual conversations with council members, I think there's interest in bumping up, at least with some of the council members. So that's something we probably want to discuss in the future.
Well, I think just generally, as we've talked before, in the upcoming years, there's going to be massive infrastructure needs.
Right.
Communities aging at the same time. Sidewalk's no different.
Well, and it seems like the sidewalks are getting longer and expensive, more expensive.
They really are.
Neighborhood connections, now they're these half-million-plus projects, so.
Yeah, of course Cary Parkway was really long and expensive. So we have had a few, but it seems like we're getting some chunky ones right now.
Mr. Smith?
No, I think we'd always like to see more. I think these are the right three at this time, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Great comics, Jack.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Deans.
Thank you.
We now move to our third discussion item. It's the Marshall Parkway and Carpenter Up Church Road Intersection Improvements Project with CSX engineer Robert Schultz will present the item and council may take action.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight we'll be presenting the construction bid award for the Marshall Parkway and Carpenter Up Church Road Intersection Improvements Project with CSX Railroad for your consideration. The project is located in Western Cary. It's an intersection improvement project, and it's just east of NC-55 Highway and west of Lewis Stevens Drive. The existing conditions, when Cary originally extended Marshall Parkway west to NC-55, and I believe it was 2011 is when we opened that, both CSX and NCDOT required Cary to install concrete and monolithic islands that are raised here at the intersection of Carpenter Up Church and Marshall Parkway. And when those were installed, they were, the intent was to enhance movements and limits, enhance safety and limit those traffic movements. As you can see, since then, our citizens and staff have observed that the raised median islands intended for safety have actually resulted in some of the vehicles using the railroad track to cross the intersection. And this is a screenshot of a video, so I apologize for the resolution provided by our traffic management center, but it's a delivery truck using the railroad crossing surface to make that move. Very unsafe.
I like how you blocked out the name of the truck to protect the guilty.
Yes, I was instructed to do that. Very keenly. I was going to leave it in for effect, but I was told to take it out, which was a good The planning and design, Cary citizens take great pride in our transportation network, and their input helps to ensure our streets are safe, provide a high level of mobility, and are well-maintained. The planning and design of this project is a result of input from our citizens as well as collaboration with NCDOT, CSX Railroad, and Wake County Public Schools. This project proposes to remove those concrete islands that are raised that prohibit those movements. With input from our Cary citizens and direction from council, those will be removed with this project that restrict those intersection movements. And this project will propose a traffic signal. A new traffic signal will go in, and there'll be a metal pole mast arm here and a metal pole mast arm here. It's hard to see, I apologize for all the blue. And this will be the residual island that's left. It's probably about 65 feet to 70 feet of island, adding those left turn lanes once that signal's installed. And that signal will be coordinated with the railroad signal that's installed as part of the project. The next steps of the project are to issue the notice of award to contractor and narrow in contracting, execute those contracts, and begin construction of winter 2018. And the construction is anticipated to be complete by spring of 2019. Staff recommendation in summary is to award the construction bid in narrow in contracting of Raleigh for a total of $841,345. And that council appropriate the necessary funds needed to complete the project, which is roughly $64,310. This concludes this presentation, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. It seems like this has been around forever.
Forever.
Glad to see that we're getting close to bid, at least I hope we are. Questions, comments, or a motion?
Make a motion to approve the contract as well as appropriate $64,310 of additional funds to the project.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Schultz.
Thank you, council.
We now move to our last discussion item, 17 ACTO2 Land Development Ordinance Amendments, and that will be presented by our senior assistant attorney, Ms. Glover, and council may take action.
Thank you. We've definitely saved the best for last. Tonight we're asking for your decision on Land Development Ordinance Amendments Act Two. I'm presenting this item because of the topics included and because we're introducing a new method for voting on LDO amendments in reaction to legislation enacted this summer. As you recall, we brought three items before you at a public hearing on November 2nd. Item A incentivizes structured parking by permitting administrative approval of requests for parking above current maximums when that parking is in a structure. Item B amends the LDO to be in compliance with House Bill 310, which limits local government authority to regulate small cell wireless installations. Item C included two minor process amendments regarding zoning conditions and championry surveys in mixed-use district rezoning cases. No changes have been made to items A or C since that public hearing. Text has been added to item B to permit installation of temporary wireless communications facilities when a cell tower or water tank is undergoing maintenance, such as water tank repainting, and antenna must be removed from the tower or the tank. Amendments were also made to prohibit co-location of non-stealth antenna on any existing utility poles or streetlights, and to update terminology and purpose statements to be more consistent with House Bill 310. There was discussion at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting regarding permissible locations for dual-use streetlights. Edits were made to clarify that only streetlights for which the town is financially responsible may be replaced with dual-use, small-cell-enabled streetlights. At this time, I'll call on your Planning Board chair to present the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board.
Good evening. The board voted in favor of approving item B with a change, which is why I'm before you tonight instead of having an unconsent, and that change was to deny approvals for doing these towers on private property. And it was brought up by the staff at that time, but that's a very, very small percentage, a really small number compared to all those that are in right-of-ways and everything else. But still, we had some members who felt that it was important enough to go ahead and get that out there. So their comments for why they wanted to amend the motion to eliminate the private property was basically that even though the town has done an exceptional job writing this to accommodate the changes, the legislation, the state legislation has required us to do, we could still go a little further in protecting these folks who have a tower on their home or on their property, because the jury is still out on what 5G could do to someone. And I don't quite know those details, but that was brought up at our meeting, so I thought I would share that with you. From a procedural standpoint, there was a motion put on the floor to go ahead and make this change and approve it, and it was approved by six to two. Afterwards, in talking to some folks, the two dissenting votes were, we would have approved it as written. We didn't need this little change in here. And there was, and I, you know, I can't share with you like officially casually what was said afterwards, but that, it would have passed had that motion hit the floor first. So it just so happened that this other motion got legs first and was passed and approved. The predominant idea against putting this little exemption is, we're going to tax the compliance staff with a really hard job of enforcing this kind of thing, and we're going to be in these weird situations where someone could have their property, has no tower, and the streetlight right next to them, which is in a right-of-way, gets a tower, now someone doesn't have cell service or what have you. And we just thought that the, for such a small percentage, the minority, the two people dissenting, thought it's just not worth keeping that distinction in there. But like I said, the limitation was passed, so that's what I stand here and tell you we approved today. That's the only change to everything as written.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Evangelista?
Thank you. That concludes our presentation. We're available for questions. When you're ready to make a motion on this, remember that we're now using a new process for voting on LDO amendments that's required for new rezoning cases or text amendments initiated after October 1st. I can help guide you through that if there are questions.
Questions, comments, or are you ready for a motion?
Well, just make some comments. I did attend the Planning and Zoning Board meeting where they discussed this, and I actually agreed with staff recommendation and the two dissenting votes that would have, or preferred to have voted for as presented, first and foremost being that this will be or could be an enforcement nightmare for our town staff. You know, there are very, very few light poles that are on private property, and my understanding is we don't even know where those are. And so how we enforce that, it just seems to be an unfair burden. Secondly, I think the motion to prohibit them on private property was made predominantly out of fear that we don't know what this new technology can do, or, you know, and we've been told time and time again by our legal staff and state legisl, we can't consider fear. Number of government, federal organizations and such have determined that cell towers do not cause any problems, and therefore we cannot consider that maybe they do. So while I appreciate the intent to regulate just because we can, I just don't think it's the right thing to do to our staff and place that burden on them, nor do I like making decisions based on fear. So I would prefer to approve this. I'm not sure if it would be exactly what you originally proposed to the Planning and Zoning Board, or if you've made changes, but to not regulate, to treat them all the same is what I would prefer to do.
Right, so the only change we made was to clarify, in reaction to their comments, was to clarify that the only streetlights on residential property that could be replaced with the dual-use, small-cell facility are ones that the town is financially responsible for. So sometimes there may be private streetlights that an HOA maintains and the town has nothing to do with. Wouldn't be talking about those, we'd just be talking about town, town's streetlights that we're responsible for, that are typically located right behind the right-of-way.
Okay, so did my, is what you're proposing now?
It's in.
Are we?
Yes.
Okay.
It's in, it's in what's attached to your staff report.
Okay.
We ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Want to walk us through it then?
Do you want a little help? So it's easier, you know, you used to have to do two motions, one on the amendment and one on the consistency statement. Now you're able to just do one motion that both approves or denies the rezoning or the LDO amendment and adopts the required statement regarding consistency with the Imagine Cary Community Plan and the reasonableness of the request. So the text of the motions and the full statement was attached to your staff report, and I think it may be at your seat, but you don't have to read the entire paragraph.
Yay.
That's the good news. So for example, you could say something like, "I move to approve LDO Amendments 17 Act O2 and adopt the statement of consistency as attached to the staff report for this item."
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
That was awesome.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Glover. All right, now it's time to go into closed session. Now I'll call on Ms. Bush for a motion.
I move that pursuant to GS 143, 318, 11A15, that we hold a closed session to instruct the town staff concerning the position to be taken on our behalf of the town in negotiating the price and material terms of contract or proposed contract for acquisition of property owned by Thomas Scott Cooper and Rebecca Jones Cooper located at 804 Pamlico Drive, Cary, North Carolina, to consult with attorneys employed by and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town, and to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by EGAS 132, oh, there's a new one, 1.2. 132, oh, there's a new one, 1 dot 2, and/or 143-318-10E.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Glover. All right, now it's time to go into closed session. Now I'll call on Ms. Bush for a motion.
I move that pursuant to G S 143-318-11A15, that we hold a closed session to instruct the town staff concerning the position to be taken on our behalf of the town in negotiating the price and material terms of contract or proposed contract for acquisition of property owned by Thomas Scott Cooper and Rebecca Jones Cooper located at 804 Pamlico Drive, Cary, North Carolina, to consult with attorneys employed by and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town, and to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by G S 132, oh, there's a new one, 1 dot 2, and/or 143-318-10E.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we are adjourned. Thank you.
This has been a production of Cary TV. Visit the Town of Cary website, latonofcary.org.